All right, good afternoon, everybody. In accordance with Section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. All right, Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted, but this will be temporarily upgraded to panelist. When your item is being held, during that time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen and any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card. Those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that your name, address, and email address are included, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, and in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. All right, regarding the hearing procedures today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit at the committee must have been emailed in advance at the hearing. Staff and the committee cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Again, please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, or, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room that are here with us, then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have the opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. All right. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for either of the afternoon slots? No declarations of interest? All right. I'd like to deal, we have one request for deferral, so we're just going to quickly deal with that and get that out of the way. Item number fourteen, one Leona Drive. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story garden suite on top of an existing detached garage. This application was previously deferred on November seventh, twenty twenty-four. We've got variances for rear yard setback, north side yard setback, south side yard setback, two variances for penetration of angular planes, height, and two variances for eve encroachment, as well as one variance for floor area. On file material from the applicant, report from community planning, a memo from transportation, letters of concern from seventy-nine Andale Drive, and three Leona Drive. You have your agent or applicant with us?
Yes.
Oh, great, in person. Just come on down to the podium, make sure the mic's on, start by giving us your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Greg Ewens, acting as the agent for the owner of one Leona, one fifteen, fifteen fifty Kingston Road, Suite thirteen forty-five. We are in favor of the recommended deferral from Transportation Services. We did not receive a report from Transportation Services the first go-around with this, and so they've requested additional information. That, given the timing of the report, we haven't had time to prepare and send to them, and we would like to meet with them about it as well. Similarly, community planning did not submit a report the first time around, and so their report this time is something that we'd like to discuss with them as we received it last week. And we would like to take opportunity during the deferral period to try and address the comments they've raised with that report.
All right. I believe also we have a neighbor here to speak to the item, but just before we get to them, I should ask my colleagues whether they have any questions for you. All right, no questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get back to you. All right, we have someone else here for this item? Yes?
My neighbor.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Your name and address for us?
My name is Stefan Yonescu. I am the neighbor to the north of number one Leona, number three Leona.
All right. So, the applicant, the agent, is requesting a deferral today. I'm going to provide you an opportunity to speak, but I would just caution, please, only to the request for a deferral. We won't get into the merits of the application unless we hear it today.
Okay, so I was not made aware that there was different information made available to the applicant here. However, I do believe that they had a long time, the first time they applied, there's been four months, I believe, since the last time we came here to see each other. So they have plenty of time to prepare, in my opinion.
All right. So you're not in favor of the request for deferral?
I am definitely not in favor. We've deferred once already, like I've taken time off work. We all have commitments to be here, right?
Fair enough. Okay. Any questions? All right, no questions. Let's get the agent back. Sir, just, I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond, just to confirm, the request for deferral is actually in response to a transportation memo that came in late? Is that, is that fair to say?
This is correct, yeah. There's additional information requested.
And when did that, what is the date of that memo? Is it February twenty-seventh?
I believe, we received it last Friday. We were advised by staff.
Okay, and have you been in touch with transportation staff yet?
We've reached out to discuss, but we don't have a date for a meeting or clarification.
And they haven't responded yet back?
Not, not as of yet.
Any, any response to the neighbor?
We, so, we have reached out, both through our clients and through our firm, to the adjacent owner, to discuss some of the concerns that were raised at the last committee meeting. We've been out to the site, we've, one of the reasons for the initial deferral was to provide further clarification to the committee on the relationship of the grade condition between these two properties.
Yeah, it's a pretty obvious change.
We went out, we took a bunch of pictures of the site, we tried to provide some visuals that were in our submitted presentation before we received the two staff reports to respond to that, and so, and then we received the reports with additional requests for information and the recommendation for deferral. And I, I would very much like the opportunity to talk to planning staff and transportation about their, these new comments, and see if we can't resolve them, and as well continue to reach out and try to have a connection with and a discussion with the adjacent neighbor.
Fair enough. Well, while it isn't a requirement to discuss with the neighbor, it is certainly encouraged. I will say, this particular neighbor has been, before the committee, second time we're seeing him today, he's pretty engaged, and he has some concerns, so if there's some, if we were to grant a deferral request, it might be in your interests to at least try to continue the discussion to see if we can make any headway. But it is, it is not required, and if you don't, then we will just address it at the, at the next hearing.
Certainly, sir, and I think it's good that we're both in the same room, so we can chat with each other after this.
Okay, all right. Let's take this matter into committee for decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Members, yeah, you can sit down.
Sir, just for the record, no one's reached out to me.
Hold on, we can't, we're in committee. We have a comment, motion, Mr. Kaboo?
Mr. Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to adopt the request for a defer, so that to allow the applicant to deal with the Transportation Services, and most likely communicate with the neighbors to address any issues they may have.
All right. Do I have a second for that? Deferral request? Yes, Ms. Senkar, all in favor? All right, that is unanimous. The deferral request is approved. Sir, you may want to take this opportunity to see if you can have a in-person discussion? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Okay, let's get back to business. Item number thirteen, twenty-three Beechwood Avenue. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a rear deck. This application was previously deferred at the committee hearing on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. We've got a number of variances before us, including building height, depth, sorry, building length, depth, height, east and west main wall heights, rear deck height, and projection, first floor height, and setback of an architectural feature from a stable top of slope. On file material from the applicant, a number of memos from urban forestry, RNFP, and TRCA, staff report from community planning, letter of concern from councillor Lynn, planning report filed on behalf of residents, and objection to the application, as well as letters of concern from number five, number six, Saint Margaret's Drive, eleven May Tree Road, eighteen and twenty Beechwood Avenue, forty Highland Crescent, one fifty-three Goffdale, Mr. Graham Alloway, the Hogs Hollow Tree Watch, York Mills Valley Association, four Don Cliff Place, five Forest Glen Crescent, six Cole Millway, six Denino Court, number nine eleven fifteen and twenty Brookfield Road, number ten fourteen and thirty-four Climbidge Road, number twelve and fifty fifteen Donwoods Grove, number seventeen twenty-five Knightswood Road, number twenty-five York Valley Crescent, number thirty thirty-three eighty-four ninety-nine and one oh one, and one oh seven Donwoods Drive, number ninety-nine Lord Seton, and number one fifty Farnham Avenue, as well as material related to the previous hearing last fall where the application was deferred. We have our agents with us in person today?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
My name is Ira Kagan. I'm the lawyer for the applicant, one eighty-eight Avenue Road in Toronto, and I'm here also joined by Mr. Richard Wangle, who's the architect.
All right.
If we could put up the, the presentation that Mr. Wangle prepared, it would be in the late submission folder, and you can go to page four. Let me know when I can start.
Yes, of course. Before we get to your presentation, I'm going to ask if there's any modifications to the public notice we should know about in advance?
Yes, and as indicated in my, in my letter, the height variance is being reduced from eleven point five one meters to ten point six five meters. Ten meters, ten meters is the maximum, so it's a variance of point six five meters.
All right, and that variance number on the public notice is, is it three? Yes, staff variance number three has been modified to ten point six five meters. All right, no other changes?
Correct.
Okay, all right. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Since I only have a few minutes, I filed in advance a detailed letter explaining the substantial changes that my client made to the proposed house, so I'm not going to repeat the error. The changes resulted in several variances being eliminated entirely, trees which are important to urban forestry now being preserved, and the size of the house being reduced by nearly three thousand square feet. And in fact, from a coverage, from a coverage maximum perspective, so thirty-five percent is permitted, forty percent was what was originally applied for, and thirty percent is what is being proposed now, so it's even smaller than what could be built. I ask that you please keep this in mind when you hear concerns from others, that the house is an overdevelopment or too big. It is no such thing. And as my letter indicated, the Gadakis did reduce their ask with respect to building height, which I've explained earlier. Now, the TRCA has said, both with respect to the first variance application and the revised variances, that it has no objection, and so there is no concern with a stable top of bank. It is not at risk. Any permit that we're required to get from TRCA will be applied for. Likewise, the revisions we made eliminated any objection from urban forestry. It now only asks for standard conditions to be imposed. The focus of the concerns from the residents and city planning are on height, building length, and building depth, so that's what I'm going to focus on. And as this committee well knows, variance numbers alone do not tell the whole story, and sometimes can be misleading, which is why Mr. Wangle prepared the presentation that he did. So if we could go to page six of the presentation, I want to deal with the issue of height. Now, on page, so it's PDF page six. One more, or one more earlier, that's the one. That's it. In green, you'll see the portion of the house that exceeds the ten-meter height limit. It's very small. It's a gently sloping roof in the middle portion of the house. It's hardly visible and will create no impact. Now, the red, yeah, if we can go to page four, please, for a minute? No, it's not that page, sorry. Go to six, please. There we go. Okay, on the left-hand side of the image, you'll see a red broken line. That shows the sidewall heights that are permitted as of right. You'll notice that they are much closer to the side lot lines than we're proposing. Our side lot line setbacks are in fact about double what is required as a minimum. So even though the sidewall heights are higher than they're allowed to be, by virtue of bringing the house further away from the neighbors and having the gently sloping roof, you can see the impact is negligible. In fact, for the neighbors, it's better. Can we go to page five of the presentation, please? On page five, we indicate what some height variances are in the neighborhood. I noticed that they range up to a maximum of twelve point six eight meters, but I also want to point to our immediate neighbor to the west, and they are at ten point nine nine meters in building height, so we're not even as high as our immediate neighbor. I want to now deal with building length and building depth. Can we go back to page four, please? Okay, and we'll need to, we'll need to focus in on the top left-hand part of the page, so you may have to go up a little bit. You'll notice that there's a green broken line there, yeah, a little bit more. You'll notice that there's a green broken line, and that represents the existing house. And you'll notice that its building length and building depth today is greater than what is being proposed. So we are reducing building length and building depth with the new house. Most of the variance for building depth and building length, in fact, is not the house itself, but the deck. And the deck is, doesn't have any structure above it, it's open to the sky. That's unlike what you see today, because the back of the existing building actually is one story all the way to the back, further than what we're proposing. Now, if you look at the top left-hand image, the top left part of this image, I know it's a little bit small, but the area in blue, that's really the only additional building that is being added beyond the permitted depth. That's what's being added beyond what's allowed. And the red areas on the left and right side are what could be built as of right, but we are not doing it, because we are almost doubling the minimum required setback. And the amount of space in the red is about equal to the amount of space in the blue. What essentially Mr. Wangle did was he took the permissible building envelope, and he just moved it to the back and took it away from the sides. Why? Because that's a better situation for the neighbors, it preserves a row of existing mature trees, and clearly creates less of an impact. And then if you go down, same page, but just down a little bit to the larger image, you'll see a diagonal line cutting through the pink area. So this is a, what we tried to illustrate here is, what would be the view that the neighbor on the left would see with the existing house? Remember, the existing house is one, one story in the back, and that's what that line represents. And if you look at the proposed house, which is the purple, it's less of an impact, and the pink is just the deck.
Just be mindful of the clock, I'm going to give a little bit of extra time, just because I realize there's quite a bit of objection to this, so I want to make sure that you're provided opportunity to get your points out, but just please be mindful of the clock.
I am grateful for that, thank you. In fact, I may actually save the rest of my comments for responses when I hear what people have to say.
Yes.
Because I've actually gone through the majority of the variances that I think are an issue. There are other variances here, I've explained them all away in the letter, I'll respond to them if necessary.
Of course, yeah.
But, but in my respectful opinion, the four tests are clearly met in this case. As I said before, the numbers don't tell the story. This lot is eighty-eight feet deep, eighty-eight meters, I'm sorry, almost three hundred feet, eighty-eight meters deep. It's enormous, and the closest neighbors are far away. There really are no impacts, despite the fact that the numbers appear to be big.
All right, very well.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, no questions at this time. I suspect we may have more for you shortly.
Understood.
All right. Okay, who here is, who is here to speak to this item? And who would like to go first? All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michael Manette from M-Plan Inc. I'm a planning consultant on behalf of the residents in the immediate area. My address is twenty-three Foxhood Road, Thornhill, L four J nine C four. I just want to make a quick comment based on what Mr. Kagan just indicated with respect to coverage. Coverage on its own is only one aspect of minor variances. Coverage indicates an area on a property within which a building can be built, but in order for it to be considered appropriate, it still has to meet all of the other zoning regulations, including the depth of the building, and the depth of the building, even if it was within the coverage, may be more than what is permitted by the bylaw. So I think you have to remember that all, in order to be considered as of right, you must meet all of the regulations. So I just wanted to indicate that I'm a registered professional planner, a member of the Canadian Institute of Planners, and I'm providing a planning opinion. I did not see any planning submission from the applicant to support the application. So it's fine to say it meets the four tests, but you haven't heard any evidence to support that. I did provide you, the committee, with a report, a planning justification report, which I hope you had the opportunity to review, since obviously I won't have time to go through that, but I think the most important thing that I'm going to dwell on are the planning policies and regulations. And so the first test for the, meeting the general intent and purpose of the official plan, there are specific policies, and I've referenced those in the planning report, that deal with the massing of the house. And in my opinion, the massing is extreme with respect to the site itself and the variances that are being requested. In fact, the massing that's being requested is almost twice what is permitted as far as a footprint, and then in addition to that, you have a deck that's added onto the back, which is also way beyond what is permitted. So when you combine those with the additional height above grade, as, when you combine all of those things together, in my view, this is not an appropriate development for the site, and the house is just too big. With respect to the intent of the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw's intent is to provide for a massing that is appropriate for the site and for the neighborhood, and the regulations that are being requested to be amended here are being, in effect, doubled. And to me, that is not appropriate. With respect to minor inappropriate development for the property, you're going to hear a number of individuals in the neighborhood who will provide details of impact with respect to the impact that they will have from this dwelling, and also whether the development on the site is appropriate. So I won't get into too much on that either. I did want to respond to a couple of things from Mr. Kagan's letter. That's the letter of February twenty-sixth, I believe he was referring to. So the, I did want to point out some specific numbers, which I think are relevant. So the, the coverage that is permitted, as indicated in the statistics, are seven hundred ninety-three square meters, which would provide for a footprint of eighty-five hundred plus square feet of house. If you had a second floor of that, you would have seventeen thousand, and if you had a third floor, because you have a basement that comes out of the ground, if you include some of that space, you're ending up twenty-five thousand square feet. So to suggest that the coverage is met, that's one thing, but you end up with a massive dwelling. The length of the dwelling is proposed is an in excess of sixty feet or eighteen point three five meters, and that also, if you include the width of that extension, that adds on about another eleven thousand thirty-four square feet on the first floor. So you're talking about a significant size. When you're talking about the, the building length itself, you're adding on, effectively, with the second and third floor, you're adding on the size of a, a house of about thirty-four hundred square feet, that you're adding on to the back of the, what is permitted. I would not consider that to be minor. So I think with respect to my time, I wanted to make it clear that from a planning point of view, my planning opinion is that there is no compliance with the general intent and purpose of the official plan. The application did not comply with the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. As a result of the significant structure that is going to be built if this is approved, including the back that comes out of the ground, which is referred to as an iceberg effect, you're talking about a development that's not appropriate for the development of the site. And also, the, the application, in my view, cannot be considered minor because of the potential impact, but even if you do the math, that's such a significant increase, it's not minor. Now, you're going to hear other issues related to drainage on the site. I'm not going to get into that, but that still relates back to whether or not the development is appropriate for the site itself. So when you hear information on that and the potential flooding and erosion problems in this neighborhood, I would like you to take that into account with respect to the test for appropriateness.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Manette. All right, we have some other speakers here.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Graham Alloway, A-L-L-O-W-A-Y. I am a neighbor, and I represent several neighbors. If we could please turn, there's a planning, Mr. Manette's planning report is in front of you. If I could ask, if we could turn to the final exhibit of this planning report, please? And I'll show you exactly whom I am speaking on behalf of, including myself. It literally is the final exhibit. These are all, of course, aerial shots of the neighborhood, which we will leave to your committee at your leisure to take a look at with respect to the appropriateness, given the other buildings in the neighborhood. So while we're, while we're turning to this particular exhibit that I'd like to take a look at, if I may describe for you what, why I am standing here today. The property immediately to the east of this development is seventeen Beechwood, the Liu family, which I'm here speaking on behalf of today, because of the proximity of this particular property to the corner of Hedgewood. So this is at the intersection of Beechwood and Hedgewood Road. I'm here on behalf of twenty-three Hedgewood, where I am then owner, and also I'm speaking on behalf of twenty-one and nineteen Hedgewood, which are directly impacted by the iceberg nature. The. which are directly impacted by the iceberg nature of this particular development. So the exhibit that we're looking for, and if, I guess we're going to be, while taking a look at it, if I could just have you, uh, bear in mind that the, the length and depth of this structure will create an unobstructed view in the backyards of Seventeen Beechwood to the east, Twenty-three Hedgewood, which is also to the east and on the corner, Twenty-one Hedgewood, which its backyard comes up to and abuts the side of the proposed structure, and Nineteen Hedgewood, which again, the backyard will butt up to the actual structure, not, not the property, the actual structure itself. So what is, what is, uh, so these, these properties are all directly impacted by the mass of, of structure that is going to be built. If you take a look at the, uh, thank you, uh, thank you for, I guess, at the end of the day, you will take a look and you'll be able to find out exactly where those three, these four properties are. Taking a look at Mr. Wengel's drawings themselves, um, and taking a look at the site plan. If we could go over, is there any way that we could go over to Mr. Wengel's site plan at this point in time, just in the interest of time? If we go back over to Mr. Wengel's, the applicant's submission?
Under presentation material or plans, plans work?
So I can speak specifically to the, to the material that has been filed by the applicant? So not this one, but Mr. Wengel's, the applicant's submission? And while we're finding that submission, we did, I will, I will point out that in pursuant to your encouragement, uh, at this time of the adjournment, the neighbors did meet with the applicant and his legal counsel at length in the offices of the, of, of legal counsel. And we were unfortunately unable to resolve this matter to the satisfaction, which has led to our having to stand before you today in opposition to this. If we could just, that, that's exactly what I'm taking a look at right here. If we take a look at the pink portion, which is to the rear, that's what we call the iceberg portion of this particular development. And I will refer you back to the, within the submissions that are here. If you take a look at the rear, it's the rear view of the proposed development. You'll see that that is, in fact, at the end of that, that's probably ten, twelve feet above grade. So it's not as if there's a, there's an underground development or an underground basement going into the side of a hill or a sun. It's actually, it, it's part of a structure which is clearly visible. And that's visible to, again, coming back to, to, to where, why, who, why we're here and why we're speaking to this is Seventeen Twenty-three, Seventeen Beechwood, Twenty-three Hedgewood, Twenty-one Hedgewood, and Nineteen, uh, Nineteen Hedgewood. We're looking into the side of this thing. So it's not, uh, it's, it's, it, it, that iceberg portion of it is, in fact, predominantly above grade. When we met with legal counsel and with their applicant, we did agree. We said, if you take a look at, again, on this particular drawing, there's a red portion in here, which is the allowable building envelope. No one had any objection to building within that allowable building envelope. In fact, if they wanted to, and it was discussed, if they wanted to add on to the back of that on an equal and proportionate basis going across the back, again, no one had any objections whatsoever to building within the building envelope and extending the building envelope back towards the back.
Just be mindful of the clock.
Yes, with respect to the other concerns, uh, we do believe that counselor, uh, uh, our counselor, Rachel Chernus-Lynn, has done a very good job at, at, at summarizing the, the views and issues within the neighborhood. With respect to the TRCA, in my submission, and I have a written submission before the committee today, I have detailed why the TRCA is no longer relevant with respect to, in our, my submission, with respect to the hearings that are before here, I've, I've cited the specifics as to how their role has changed, nature has changed. In my submissions, I have also pointed out that the water, Toronto City Water, is supposed to have been consulted, has not been consulted with this application. There is water impact that's going to be happening with here. And, uh, and, uh, so, so take that into consideration. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Questions? Yes, Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you for your submission, sir. With respect to your comments and your concern around the view from the properties on Hedgewood Drive, looking into this property, how is the proposed development going to be more impactful than the existing structure, which is equally long, uh, today versus what's going to be there in the future?
Certainly. Uh, the existing structure is a single-story structure. So let's start with the number one reason why there's, 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 it's an existing structure with no iceberg impact. And in fact, it, it is, in fact, at grade. So the, what is not shown clearly on the plans is, uh, it's the late Murray Koffler's house. I don't know, Murray Koffler was the founder of Shoppers Drug Mart. He was a modest man. He built a very modest house. So it was a single-story dwelling, no iceberg effect, all built at grade. And nothing, nothing coming out from the back of it that is above grade in any way, shape, or form.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Staff, if we could just get Ms. Sankar as well, just to ensure that she's...
Through you, Mr. Chair. She had to leave.
Ah, okay, very good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claudia Fider, and I live at Twenty Beechwood Avenue, which is directly across the street from the proposed development. You have before you the letter that we originally submitted back in October, and we continue to be in opposition to the proposed development. Our planner, Mike Manette, dealt with the technical issues regarding the variances. I too am a land use planner, but I'm here as a neighbor rather than a planner today. As suggested by the Committee of Adjustment, at the previous meeting in the fall, we met with the applicant to discuss a proposal. Unfortunately, we're unable to come to a resolution. In fact, the applicant's resolu, um, representatives said to us in that meeting that planning regulations were silly. There is overwhelming opposition to this development in the community, as you can see by the number of letters that you've received and also from your planning department. The proposed building far exceeds the scale of homes in the area and is not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. The proposed building is the size of a multi-residential building, not a single-family home, and will have a detrimental impact on our neighborhood. For example, the proposed build is approximately seventeen thousand square feet above grade. And with the iceberg basement and pool extension, it's in excess of twenty-five thousand square feet. Just as a, um, reference, the homes in the neighborhood, this one to, um, the homes in the neighborhood, this would be two and a half times the size of the homes nearby. And the question, um, that was asked earlier regarding Mr. Koffler's home, the original residence, he had one and a half lots, and he chose to build on one lot and keep it modest, just as, um, Mr. Alloway stated. Um, in addition to the proposed build, they will require the removal of many trees and impinge greatly on the slope to the rear of the property, having an extremely negative impact on our neighborhood and the natural environment. Approval of such a plan, such a build, would be a dangerous precedent. I submit that the application, or the applicant should be required to build within the approved building envelope. We therefore continue to assert that the magnitude of the requested variances far exceed minor variances. We respectfully request that the application be denied. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. You mentioned a half lot. Are you referring to the lot, uh, with the driveway?
No, that's, um, unopened road allowance. It, it's just actually more historic that the lot to the wa, um, to the east was subdivided. There were two lots in the home to, so it's really, probably not really relevant, but I'm just saying from a historic standpoint, that's why it looks like the house is up against their unopened road allowance, because he, that was another piece of property that was acquired.
Yeah, could, could you just give us a little bit more information about that road allowance? Is it, is it, it's accessible to anyone in the neighborhood? I, I'm assuming to access a part of the ravine? Is that...
It's an unopened road allowance that runs from Beechwood Avenue right through to Bayview Ridge. And it is not accessible from a, um, transportation standpoint, but it is public property.
On foot, yeah.
On foot. And historically, um, Mr. Koffler had used that property as a driveway with no lease or no legal title to it. And now we have been, before our counselor on a number of occasions, to say we want that to remain in the public domain and not be transferred to this applicant. Just a bit of history, just a little aside note, that we received as neighbors a letter from a counselor, um, an ex-counselor, asking us to sign off on approval of the applicant acquiring that property.
Okay.
Their unopened road allowance, and we vehemently oppose that.
Okay. And you made one point about, uh, just comparing some of the home sizes in the area. I do note that, you know, there's a pretty, uh, big distinction in terms of the block pattern, the size of block pattern of the, of the lots that are backing onto the ravine versus ones that are on the other side of the street.
Correct.
Is, is your observation sort of inclusive of the entire neighborhood? Or is it, is it comparing homes that are on similar-sized lots that back on to the ravine portion? Because it's, it's quite a distinction from one side of the street to the other.
Absolutely. And I'm referring to even the Hedgewood homes and the ones that are along the, um, south side of Beechwood Avenue. This is, this far exceeds. And you can see that in the, there's an aerial photograph that was provided to you. You can, you could see, if you superimpose what's proposed now, it's more than double. And plus the iceberg, um, pool and basement that they're proposing.
Okay. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good afternoon.
My name is David Rudolph, and I live at eighty-four Plimbridge Road, which is at the bottom of the ravine that is impacted by this particular proposal. And, uh, I want to address the adverse impact on slope stability and safety of development that goes on to the top of the slope. And I have personal experience with that. So if we could pull up my PowerPoint? The, uh, I'll just give you some background. One Hedgewood came before, uh, the predecessor of this committee back in nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen. And, uh, no, you need to go to the beginning of that. That's the last slide. Yeah. No. That's it. That's the start of it. So, uh, in twenty eighteen, there was a proposal for a quote, "minor variance" that would have no adverse impact on neighbors or the neighborhood. And the TRCA took the position that even though that was close to the top of the slope, it would have no adverse impact, and therefore they had no objection. That was in ninety-eight, and, and that's what's highlighted there. And indeed, the prior owner of our house, Ms. Fridle, uh, complained and said, "This is going to be affecting slope stability." She specifically made that point. Can we go to the next slide? And the TRCA responded, and they concluded that there was no objection to the application for a variance. Can we go to the next slide? No. We're in the wrong PowerPoint. Keep going, keep going, sorry. There. That, no, go back. That was our backyard on Ju, on July sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. Hundreds of thousands of dollars went into making that. That was the reason we bought this house, because of that incredible feature. And the TRCA said, "Oh, building at One Hedgewood would have no impact on that." Well, let's go to the next slide. That's what it currently looks like. And that's because the house at One Hedgewood caused the top of that ravine to collapse, literally to collapse. And the top of that ravine came tumbling down into our backyard. Can we go to the next slide? Those are the trees that ended up in our backyard, barely missing our house, by the way. Next slide? Look at the size of those trees that came down. The TRCA took the position, "Oh, this will have no impact on Ms. Fridle's property." No impact. Their opinion is worthless. And I noticed Mr. Kagan cited that, and he said, "Oh, well, stable top of the slope, that's nothing for you to consider." TRCA says that's all okay. They said the same thing here. And I submit to you, it is something to consider for property values, for the neighborhood, for life and safety. If my kid had been out in that backyard when that slope came down, she could have been killed, literally. That's a landslide. It's going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, literally, to repair that. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. So Mr. Kagan says, "Oh, the TRCA says this is all okay?" No, that's not accurate, because that's what happened to our house in July of this year as a result of the house at One Hedgewood. And this lot backs right up to the same ravine, the same ravine that we are on. And if you look at the water, let's go to the next slide. Well, I think you have, like, you, you'll see in the, in the, there's a, a diagram of where the water flow will go. Well, the, the, this is, this is the water flow that exists now, before there's any kind of a new development with an iceberg and a swimming pool and twenty-five thousand feet. Imagine the impact on the slope, and imagine the impact on the stormwater. There is nothing in this, in this proposal that takes into account the stormwater or what's going to happen. That's the stormwater now. Imagine what it's going to be. So I just want to say that this is not a minor variance. It's not a minor variance. It is a significant variance. And I'd ask you all to look at the reality of our situation and take that into account. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions? All right, we have some other speakers here? Yes, please come down.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Thank you for letting me speak. I am Christina Panaton. I live at eleven May Tree Road. I'm at the bottom of the road allowance ravine for which Twenty-three Beechwood Avenue abuts. I have major concerns about what is going on presently. You can see the picture. That picture of that water is right across the street from my home. And this is not the first time we've seen this. My husband and I moved in in nineteen ninety-six. We have watched mud, six inches, twelve inches of mud, coming from that slope all the way down to our property, May Tree Road, York Valley Crescent, Plimbridge Road, and Green Valley Road. This is a major problem. We've had stormwater management in. It was ineffective. Mr. Wengel has provided us a flow chart of where the water will be flowing from Twenty-three Beechwood, right on to the road allowance that's across the street from us, which is completely malfunctioning despite millions of dollars of stormwater management in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Now, it's, to some people, "Oh, it's no big deal. The TRCA says it's okay." Well, the TRCA doesn't have to get flood insurance, for which many of my neighbors now do not qualify. And the insurance people do not rely on the TRCA flood mapping. So there is a lot of in, adverse impact from this type of variances that this house is requesting. Right now, we have a really serious public safety issue. Right now, we have a really serious public safety issue. Houses like this aren't going to improve it, and I see no movement in the plans for this or in the variances to address the problems that we have right now. And we're also under a one-hour evacuation from the TRCA in the event of the dam release. So that appears nowhere in the application from the TRCA with their no objection letter. And the cost of cleanup is another issue. It takes weeks to clean up the streets. We are subjected to the stench of sewage. It's some days you cannot use your backyard because all the mud starts to deteriorate, and the stench is just awful. So I would like the committee to think very seriously about these variances and the adverse impact on our streetscape. Do you have any questions?
I'll ask the members. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We have other speakers here in person?
It may be some online.
Oh, I suspect there might be, but we'll, we'll get to that. So we're done with everybody in person. All right. Let's, let's head to our speakers online.
Oh, hello?
Hello?
Oh, are you calling me, Laura Lamarche?
Yes, we are. Your address, please?
Oh, six Saint Margaret's Drive in Hogs Hollow, down the hill from twenty-three Beechwood at the bottom of the ravine and across the river. The Don River runs right through my property. Thanks for letting me speak today. There was a couple of letters or pictures that were submitted by Shirley. They came in the late information, but one shows the topographical river that's beside Beechwood. That's it. Perfect. Thank you. I just want to have that up while I go through my, my, my speech here. So we've lived in...
Hello? Ms. Lamarche? I think we lost her.
Internet issues. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Yes.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I'm not sure why it's cutting in and out. So I just wanted to, to highlight the fact that these storms that we're receiving down in the valley have occurred frequently. And even after the, the time that the city has spent and the twenty-four million dollar project with stormwater management, plus, plus, all of the other monies that are used to, to clean up a lot of that flood, flooding waters that come down from Beechwood. You can see in the diagram, that is a riverbed that flows right down from the property. So as you've heard, that the massing of this building will only make that matter worse. It displaces soft ground cover, trees, and all of the mitigating features that...
Ms. Lamarche, we, we lost you there again. Just have staff try to reestablish a connection.
To you, Mr. Chair. She's, she seems to be connected and normal from our side, but probably her microphone have some issue.
All right. Hopefully, she can hear us. Ms. Lamarche, perhaps you're on mute? Yes, please. Let's, we're going to go to another speaker, and we'll try to reach Ms. Lamarche at the end.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. I'm Shannon Randcor at one oh seven Drive in Hogs Hollow, in the neighborhood directly below the proposed development. You've heard a little bit about this when other, when others were speaking, but I'm here to mainly talk about the trees that will be impacted and how that's going to adversely impact the entire neighborhood. We've talked about, you've heard about, we've got loads and loads of concerned neighbors who are concerned about the massive variances that are being requested and the iceberg nature of this house. And you've received letters of objection and requests for denial from our counselor, the city planning staff, the RNFP, very importantly, Neighborhood Rapairs Associations. And although the applicant cited Urban Forestry, I've spoken with Urban Forestry several times over the past few days, they cited that there are tree impacts shown on the plan they don't support and could result in tree permit denials. So they, they weren't, really weren't genuine or truthful in what they said. We were able to get forty-six community members, people who live in Hogs Hollow and in the hedgewood and surrounding area, to send in their concerns. So I just think from that outpouring, you can see how obvious the apprehension is about, about the people, from the people in the neighborhood. I, it's really hard for you to understand how concerned the neighborhood is and how dangerous this proposed build is. The trees and the fact that almost every single healthy, mature tree on the flat, buildable portion of the land will be destroyed is really, really concerning. We know that the Committee of Adjustment members, all of you, have already had to have tree sensitivity training from Urban Forestry. I hope you really think about that when you, when you decide what you're going to, what your decision will be. Laura, who somehow got caught off, cut off or wasn't, unable to get through, she and I started Hogs Hollow Tree Watch four years ago to try and protect the tree canopy that is such an essential part of our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. We found that in most of the cases, when trying to preserve trees, we were dealing with developments exactly like this, who really don't consider it tall, the trees, and they're just trying to build the largest possible house that the lot can accommodate. Trees are always an afterthought. The variance requests for twenty-three Beechwood are massive, and they're dangerous. Twenty-three Beechwood lies at the top of a vast, well-treed ravine. This ravine houses a vibrant ecosystem, but really importantly for all of us, is it's a sound buffer and an air purifier from the four oh one and Young Street, which run very close by. These trees help mitigate, but very importantly, they help mitigate flooding, provide soil stability, and prevent erosion. So the trees protect the homes above and below. The proposed development at twenty-three Beechwood lies on a steep part of the ravine with the natural runoff, which Laura was showing right there. And when it rains, this riverbed, this dry riverbed becomes a raging river, which you've already seen photos of that, flooding all those who live below. Destroying all the trees on the property, or most of the trees on the property, will make a bad situation even worse. So just to round this up, to put it into perspective, twenty-four trees will be taken off of the lot and nine destroyed. That is almost every single tree on the lot. I did have some photos of the trees that will be taken. I don't know if we'll be able to find them. There were photos two and three that I sent in. Really important to, really important to note, too, is that thirty trees were removed from that lot in two thousand and twenty without a permit by the previous owners. Urban Forestry asked for those trees to be replanted, but they were not, they were not replanted. So if you think about that, that is almost sixty trees that are going to be removed, that have been or will be removed from that lot. Additional deforestation would severely compromise this environmentally sensitive area and increase the likelihood of top of slope erosion. There is great concern about the stability of the slope, and you've already seen like horrifying pictures. No, these pictures aren't related. The applicant has requested a significant variance to allow the building to be closer to the top of slope. Very, very dangerous. Removing trees and their ability to absorb water and hold soil in place, married with an iceberg house too close to the top of an already weakened slope, is a recipe for disaster. You've actually already seen it from a previous speaker. I think also, that's something else that's been noted, is the loss of privacy. So not only is this going to be a looming build over five neighbors, but there will not be a tree to provide any additional privacy. The iceberg nature of this proposed build, the oversized front driveway, which requires the removal of sixteen healthy trees, and the house covering almost all of the flat table land, would make replanting trees impossible.
Just be mindful of the time.
There simply will not be any space left. Yeah. Yes, thanks. I will. It is virtually a total loss of green space and permeable land to absorb water. This is so important to note, that this lot, the flat, buildable part of this lot will be almost all house, no place to plant trees, no lawn to suck up water. It's moving, it's closer to the top of the ravine than it should be. It is truly a clear and present danger to all those living in the neighborhood. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. No questions at this time. We have some more speakers, staff? Did we manage to get ahold of Ms. Lamarche?
To you, Mr. Chair. Laura Lamarche is currently out of hand because she's, her speaker is not connected. Laura, please sign out and sign in again. We do, we are not able to unmute you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So Laura just texted me, and she said, "Can you tell them I called in?" So I don't know if she's now calling, or... Is there some protocol she should follow to try to get on?
Said she phoned in.
Laura, if you can hear, yes, I think she can.
Yeah. Technology.
There we go.
There we go. So I apologize. I'm not sure what's wrong. Technology, good and it's bad. Anyway, Shannon said a lot of what I wanted to say, so I just wanted to highlight that this, this house is an iceberg house in nature, with the underground pools and the patio, encroaches on the hill, and extends well beyond where the length of house variance allows. City Council's in the process of studying the dangers of iceberg homes. It was brought out, brought up in council, and they're right in the midst of deciding the policies we need to address the threat of these builds. But the city is behind and late to establish any rules. So why would we set a precedent on such a lot that could be a serious risk to people and properties, especially down below on the hill? You saw the mudslide from a couple of properties. It's not the only one. It's occurred five or six times since I've lived here, and they're all from people messing with the top of the hill. The slope needs to be protected. It's a heritage forest. That wasn't mentioned, and it's got to be left alone. We understand that many city departments take time and effort to assess these applications, and they all have their individual regulations and guidelines, but we must take a step back and see the whole picture when assessing the total impact of such a precedent-setting build. Each department's decision to allow variances here, approved tree removals there, allowing encroachments along ravines, all add up to one risky property at the end, at the top of our hill. This massive build will displace more water and will mess with the integrity of the slope and will pose a threat to the neighbors below. We must not let this application continue, and it sets a dangerous precedent. Thanks for your attention.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Staff, we've heard from everybody online. Okay. All right. Let's turn this back to the agent and our architect for response.
Thank you very much. Can we put up page six of Mr. Wengel's presentation? This is the same image we saw before. Thank you. So Mr. Manette said that the massing of the proposed house is double what is permitted. This is not true, and it's obvious from the image on page six all by itself. Sorry, PDF page six. So that's page five. That's still page... Oh. Sorry. Could, could you go to page four? I think I had the wrong page number. My apologies. Page four. Yes, that's the one. Sorry. So as we indicated before, the red outline is what's permitted as of right. The blue is what's proposed for the actual house, not the deck in the back. And as is obvious from this, it is not double what is permitted. Mr. Manette made a point of saying, you know, "I'm the only land use planner here," and that may be true, but you don't need an opinion from a land use planner in order to determine whether the four tests are met. You often hear from architects, lawyers, and even the applicants themselves without a planner, and yet you render decisions, sometimes, but not always, approving the variances. So please don't, please don't be swayed by that statement. Mr. Alockway said that the rear deck is clearly visible. Well, we never said it was invisible. It is visible because it's a walkout condition. The slope of the property goes from the street down. So of course, it's visible, but it's clear from the diagrams that we've submitted that the impact of a rear deck that's uncovered is nowhere close to the structure that exists today. Now, there's one thing that Mr. Alockway and Ms. Fider, I think that's how you pronounce her name, Fider, told you that I was quite disturbed by. I think it was inappropriate. They told you that we met with them to try to resolve matters. That's completely appropriate. We agree. We did. They told you that it was unsuccessful. That's completely appropriate to tell you. We did. Unfortunately, it was unsuccessful. But they went further than that, and they disclosed some of the things that were said in these meetings. These meetings are held strictly without prejudice on purpose, so that people can be free in their discussion, and those discussions aren't used against them later. It was completely inappropriate for them to have said what was said in the meeting. I'm not going to take that bait and correct the record by telling you what was really said, because then I would be making the same mistake they did. But I do want to say this, that with respect to the statement that Ms. Fider said in particular, not only was it taken out of contents, but it is inaccurate. And if people disclose what is said in these meetings, you're not going to have these meetings happen again, and that would be bad for all of us. Mr. Alockway also said that the back of the existing, we'll call it the Koffler House, the back of the existing Koffler House, which is a one-story structure, is at grade. That's not true. The property slopes down. The back of that house starts six feet above grade. There's a difference between grade and ground, and I think he doesn't understand that distinction, and, and that may be the case, and I understand that. The Gadaquis are elderly people. They're here, the audience. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but they are elderly people. And one of their reasons for building the house or proposing to build the house the way it is, is that they wanted their first floor to be stair-free, because that's the way they get around easily. And when you have a sloped property and you want your first floor to be stair-free, there's only so much you can do. It would be impossible to have the back of the house at grade, as Mr. Alockway says. Mr. Rudolph said that the TRCA opinion is worthless. I disagree. I think you can rely on it. But he also mentioned stormwater management concerns. Stormwater management is also the purview of city staff. They haven't raised any concerns with the stormwater management of this site. I think you can take some solace from the fact that these two departments or agencies do not have concerns. With respect to whether or not Urban Forestry is opposed or not opposed... With respect to whether or not urban forestry is opposed or not opposed, I didn't call them yesterday, I'm not telling you what they might have said to me over the phone, their memo speaks for itself and I think you can rely on it. If, if, if it's permissible now, I'd like Mr. Wengel to just speak for a moment about what the differences would be in terms of variances if instead of taking the existing house away, he, you renovated the existing house. Because I think that might be important, and if you'll allow him to speak for a few minutes, I'd ask you to do that, please.
I'm going to allow one minute, Pat.
Sure.
Given the nature of the application.
Thank you.
I have allowed others to go over, but please be mindful, like, we're really trying to stay with the procedure.
Again, I think, as an architect, I always try to deal with qualitative aspects as opposed to quantitative, because numbers can be misleading. If we just go to our plan number four, very quickly, this is fine, and again, this is perfectly done. What we've noticed, if we wanted to renovate the house, and we talked about it at one point, I knew Mr. Koffler, I've known his whole family, I've done five houses for the whole family, I've been very aware of this home. Had we renovated and kept the red envelope and added onto the house and maybe added on a partial second floor, we'd have the same variances today in terms of length, depth, and actually greater depth and greater length and less setback at the front. What we've done, we think, which makes sense, if we go to our next page, just with the height, et cetera, we've traded spaces in the volume. One more, please. One more page, please. And this is the best test of it, in, yes, right there, if you stay, go back, one more, thank you. Right there. The red envelope, and we have a plethora of, next page, sorry, right there. There's a plethora of houses designed with these roofs that kind of drip over the edge. We didn't want that. What we've essentially just done is put this volume within an azurite envelope and just taken off the outer skin. The benefit of that is we preserve all the trees down the side, there's three magnificent oaks in the backyard that are irreplaceable in our lifetime, and that's how we started working backwards from the existing length. There are retaining walls there that are being maintained in the back of the property to keep the drainage. We've worked the same way. This is an agent-placed house, we've put some provisions for some additional vehicles underground with a single door, which was once quoted by some of the committee members saying, that's a very good urban solution, as opposed to three car garages that kind of waste the landscape.
Okay.
The house is designed sensitively, it's done properly with excellent materials, it's a house that allows the clients to agent place, and again, many variances could be reduced, for example, just height above, above established grade, just by lowering the vestibule.
All right, I'm going to have to cut you there, Mr. Wengel.
Thank you.
Because we're, we're two minutes over.
Appreciate it.
Uh, I suspect we may have some questions? Yes, Mr. Bart, not yet? Yes, Mr. Bartolo.
Perfect, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wengel, for the presentation. Couple of quick questions, because I know this is a bit of a point of contention. Do you have um, any references to the existing impermeable ground cover as it stands today versus what you're going to have in the future if you were approved? Do we know what that looks like?
I, I can show you on the site plan. If we go to the first site plan. We can do one more and just go up, it's going to be a bit hard, you'll have to zoom in through the first site plan that we have. In terms of number, it's going to be difficult, but if you look at the green outline that's there right now, if you maybe zoom in a little bit, and you will see that green above the building is actually a, it's occupied building. Beyond that, you see a little retaining wall that kind of zigs up and down above it towards the top of the page. That's actually patio that exists already at the walkout of the Koffler residence. So there is also some more patio to the bottom corner. Where we are changing is in the new part of the building, to the east of the building, where that is right now landscape space in the azurite section that we are occupying. So there's really the extra corner just past that little rectangle of red above on the, uh, on the left, that's the additional space. We purposely pulled the building in to add more landscaping, and again, another component, someone said there's not enough space to landscape, there is plenty of space on the ravine side above the top of slope to actually put more trees to reinforce, but the main thing was keeping those majestic oak trees at the back and, and building around them on the same footprint of the existing house. And we've also pulled our building back from the existing Koffler line on the west side, so there's actually more space down the side.
I just wanted to, to remind the committee that the coverage maximum, which is a, a measure of stuff on the ground that the rain can't go through, that's the coverage, uh, the maximum's thirty-five percent, and our house is at thirty percent, so it's below even the maximum coverage. My, my best guess from looking at the picture that Mr. Wengel shows is that the amount of, the amount of permeable space is at least as good as it is now and might be a little bit improved. But that's a guess based on this image, it's very hard to measure just with my eyes.
Fair enough. Uh, clarifying question, maybe Mr. Wengel can answer. Um, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, uh, beyond the rear wall of the lower level projection, uh, there's a, there's a, there's a staircase and uh, it seems to be some sort of structure that kind of wraps around the house?
That's the existing retaining walls on the Koffler property. So part of the design, it's predicated on the fact that those oak trees can't have their grade adjusted, we have to protect them. So we kept the back line of the Koffler house, which then is the furthest extent of, of physical house, those retaining walls are slightly depressed from the grade that's there, and they've been there for probably since the house has been built, but those are the existing retaining walls that are being maintained.
Okay, uh, actually, just so I make sure we're all on the same page, if staff, can we just scroll over?
Yeah, yeah, we go to page four, it's a little clearer.
It's quite a wide walkway area, you could see it supports that staircase, so you're telling me that's part of the existing condition?
Yes, that, that wall along the top that bumps up and then goes down again?
Yeah.
That's a retaining wall, it's part of the walkout at the Koffler, where the greenhouse is, that protects the trees, there was some paving there that's slightly depressed by about...
So that's existing?
That's correct, and we've maintained that, we haven't touched it, and we stayed behind that.
Okay, so in terms of new construction, um, what is the, I guess, the furthest extent or the closest extent to the ravine, uh, of the, the portion of the project that is new? Just so I understand.
So if you scroll down just a bit to get to the top of the page, just so you can see the rest of the dwelling at the top, okay, that's perfect, right there?
Just the pink portion there.
So if you see the green, the top green corner of the existing house?
Yeah.
Right there, to the left of it, from the corner, go to the other corner, the left corner, right there, that's the existing Koffler house. So from that point to the left, you go to the left, and then back down, that's the additional space above grade. That's the terrace, and underneath that is the therapeutic pool.
If, if you go a little higher in the image, you can see a dotted line which is the stable top of bank?
Yes, I did, I did see that.
And so...
So those stairs are, those stairs are existing?
No, those will be new stairs from the terrace to lead down to the backyard.
But the retaining wall, which has that bump out towards the ravine is existing?
And it should be noted, the retaining wall above, north of that, is, is a certain level, this retaining wall is actually below that, meaning the grade to the south of this retaining wall, which is really north where we're facing, is actually depressed about fifteen centimeters, about six or eight inches. It's just a way to hold in the grass and soil where those trees are, those three big oak trees, and it's a paved, paved section because that's part of the walkout of the original house, which we're keeping in terms of where the pool goes in the same spot.
Okay, so if I, if I go to page nine of your presentation material, which is the rendering at the rear?
Yes.
Just for absolute clarity. Uh, one more.
Right.
So that, that concrete lip that's in the foreground, that's the existing retaining wall?
Just at, at the bottom, go down? That's correct, that's the retaining wall on that side, and that would just get extended the same way to keep the grade and keep the water contained in there. And again, there's been questions about water runoff, et cetera. We have mitigation proposals that we're working with, with hydrology studies and our engineers to self-contain our own water. So it's, again, it's been a misnomer about calling this an iceberg house. I was actually invited by the Toronto Planning Department to have a workshop with them with several other Toronto architects about what is constituting an iceberg house. An iceberg house is something that goes underground beyond the house. This is above grade in the same location that is already existing, and all we are doing is to the east of this is extending that terrace condition. Again, there's a 1.7 meter slope from the beginning of the house to the back. The house itself is 1.8 meters out of the ground, the existing house is 0.94 meters, so a few feet higher, and the reason for that was to maintain the grade for the pool, be able to put a few vehicles underground by a single door, and again, that height above established grade, that established grade is actually higher than, or lower than the physical grade because of how it's measured, it's gone on an average, and the only reason for that, that variance was because we've kept the vestibule at the same level. If I had dropped the vestibule down four steps, it would be 1.2 meters above established grade, that variance would be gone. But for the reasons for accessibility, that's why we've kept it level. The accessibility comes when the Gadaquis can no longer do stairs, they can take the car down and take the elevator up. And that's, and again, this is all designed as well for care in place in the future where if there is a staff member, there's a place to leave vehicles and not have a four-car garage above grade that detracts.
Fair enough, okay. Uh, other questions? Yes?
So, um, sorry, my question may be quite dumb, but I'm just trying to understand why did the city planning staff recommend that this be denied? Can you just really elaborate to let me know?
I, I have, I can tell you, I've been at this committee for forty-two years, and I've probably presented over six or seven hundred times on twelve hundred projects. I think it varies depending on which staff member reviews it. I've been before this committee with a negative staff report, just recently on Sheldonrick, where we had a lot that was close to eighty meters long, and we had a similar projection, and we, no matter what we tried to explain about the numbers, they kept saying the number, the number, the number. A number doesn't dictate impact. I look at qualitative, not quantitative, and I, I've been taught that as an architect, it's not just about the numbers. I've done density studies, coverage studies, where you can expand a footprint well beyond, put a hole in the middle, you've basically created coverage that works. It's how does this house relate to the lot? How is it protected? What measures have we done to preserve views, even though they're not an entitlement, but preserve the mature trees between the houses, preserve the major trees, have room to plant trees? This is how we look at holistically, not just by the number. And if I wasn't proud to be here as the architect for this, I would never submit. I don't throw Hail Mary passes, I put in what I believe passed the four tests. I'm not a licensed planner, but I've done fifteen hundred projects, and I can say I'm an expert at the OMB and the T-Lab, and I think this is defendable, it's reasonable, and just because a planner said that I don't think this is, this length, it works, I disagree with that. Because if I took that house and I renovated it, I would be here with the same variances and more, with more impact to the neighbors, and there wouldn't be much more discussion because I'd still have the same length of building with another floor on top of it, and a wider house, and taking out a swath of trees that I could do as of right, which we don't want to. So we've thought very hard about how we can preserve as many trees as possible, and again, if there are a couple in the front that were just planted by the Kofflers, they're not natural trees, they're Austrian pines and Scotch pines, which are ornamental trees, but if we can put better trees like oak trees that are near the bank, that can help reinforce it and do some good, that's where we would want to put the additional trees that we have to replace, not the squany ones that are in the driveway. Because those were all just planted nilly-dilly by the Kofflers forty years ago, and they've grown up into be scrawny trees. They're not the best quality, but they do provide a buffer and shelter, and we want to respect that, and that's why we created this massing for the house.
Is it helpful? All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you to everybody that came out today. We're ready to take this into committee for brief discussion, followed by motion. I don't know how helpful I will be, uh, just given that we are down to four members. You want to get us started?
I will kick us off there, Mr. Chair. First of all, when there's such a large representation, I always like to start by saying that we appreciate people coming down in person and understand the different concerns of the neighborhood and those adjacent and in the broader neighborhood, and, and take all that very seriously. That being said, when I look at this, we are somewhat limited in our capacity in what we can make judgment on and what we can't, right? Uh, the water flow, state, uh, slope stabilization aspects of some of the concerns here are not necessarily within our purview, and we're not in an expert position to make, you know, decisions based on, like, the engineering merits of those items, so I, I will say that. That doesn't mean that your concerns are not unfounded or have no merit, right? There's obviously been some issues in the area which are well documented and well-known, right? Uh, that being said, when I look at this, um, on the variances that are before me and the one modification that's been made here for variance number three to reduce the height slightly, um, I, I agree with some of the arguments that the applicant made, in that you have to look at the qualitative aspects of it and not just the numbers. This lot is unique, uh, within the area and kind of within, within Toronto as a whole, there's not too many locations like this, um, and the zoning bylaws that apply across the street versus here are the same, but the lots are wildly different, both in size and quality, right? So, uh, when I look at the numerical additions that are being made here for the length and the depth, I'm, I'm less concerned about the overall numbers that are posed, and more concerned about how the design is taking place and, uh, what other variances are being triggered besides the length and, and the depth. And we don't have any issues with landscape or ground cover or, uh, that are being triggered here, right?
Or lot coverage.
Or lot coverage, right? Additionally, um, I also consider the fact that if the owners wanted to make a significant renovation to this building and add two stories on top, the footprint would be the same, and they would have, also have a massive square footage, so the square footage argument is, I'm, I'm less concerned about it in an area that has very large kind of stately homes to begin with, right? So when I, when I consider all of these things on balance, um, and the, the quality and type of house that's being proposed, I think the lot is appropriate for that type of home, right? So I'm, I'm persuaded by the applicant's arguments, and I, I don't think it's too much for the lot, I think it'd be too much for the lot across the street, but I don't think it's too much for this lot. I guess I'll start my comments there and see where it goes.
I, I think I would echo my friend, my, my colleague's comment. Uh, my understanding is that we need to look at the substance, although there are a couple of issues or comments that I, I heard, which were very valid, I'm still of the opinion that the applicant have presented the, their, their proposal in a way which to me seems to, to meet the requirements, not just of the lot, as my colleague said earlier, but as the, as the, of the regulation as well. So in spite of some of the concerns that the, the neighbors have raised, I'm of the opinion that this application is right for, for us to drop through it.
Yes, Mr. Nippe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll weigh, weigh in very briefly because we've, we've all been talking a lot, and I'm losing my voice. I agree with the initial comments that were made. I have had trouble ever since I received it trying to understand the basis of the planning department report, um, because it doesn't seem to me that what is being proposed is in fact inconsistent with the prevailing physical character of the neighborhood. It's a big house and there are big houses around, and I think that the point that Mr. Bertolo made is, um, important in reviewing this, which is that same bylaw exists, but the lots are substantially different. This is a very large lot, very narrow lot, and it's a constrained lot. I think the, the applicant has done a commendable job in trying to develop a proposal that is in fact, um, in keeping with the neighborhood and also dealing with constraints of a, of an odd-shaped lot on a ravine. The area that I do not feel that, uh, we can weigh in on is the rather extensive evidence that you provided about, um, the, uh, the water, the water causing basically an avalanche of mud down the side... of mud down the side and onto the street. That's just not our area of expertise, and so we, we turn to our experts on this. And unfortunately, notwithstanding what was said about TRCA, they on the forestry department are, are experts, and neither one of them have recommended that this application be not approved for reasons of flood control. So I'm inclined, um, as, as I gather my colleagues are, to, um, to support the application, which is to not to say that, um, as Mr. Bartolo said, that we don't appreciate the very, very extensive, um, information that you've provided us and the background that you provided us, which was very full.
Okay. Have a motion? Mr. Bartolo?
Yeah, I'll can take care of the motion there, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, I'm not going to rehash all the reasons. We've had a lengthy discussion on this. So, uh, based on the evidence presented and what we said, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application, uh, subject to the following conditions. Uh, variance number three be modified from 10.65 meters to, correction, variance number three be modified to 10.65 meters from 11.51 meters and subject to the conditions of the urban forestry memo attached here.
Okay, do I have a second or? Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. The application is approved. Do we need a relief break? Staff, committee, are we okay to keep going? You good to go? All right. Okay, let's keep going. Item number 14 has been deferred, uh, so let's move on to item number 15, 230. Yeah. Okay. Uh, all right. So item number 15, 237 Glenview Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with a rear deck. This file was deferred, uh, on November 7th, 2024 to allow the applicant time to consult with neighbors and community planning. We have two variances, driveway width and FSI, on file material from the applicant, an email, uh, and memo from transportation, memo from heritage planning, email from community planning, letter of objection from Litton Park Residence Organization, 183, 185, 207, 229, 232, 233, 238, 239, 247, 248, 260, Glenview Avenue, 362 Roswell Avenue, uh, Ms. Tamara Corsa, Bert Cosra, uh, informed letters, uh, of objection from 185, 211, 215, 216, 231, 235, 246, 243, 247, 248, 250, 256, and 258 Glenview. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano, Action Planning, 321 Lake Shore. Good evening.
Welcome back, Mr. Romano. All right.
Thank you, sir. If I, uh, if, if I may ask if staff can put up the heritage report, because I have not seen that on the AIC. Okay, thank you. Thank you kindly.
They have no, no comment. They just...
I see that.
They wrote in to, to say they have no comment, so.
Very good. Thank you. Well, staff can bring up, uh, my slide presentation, please? Um, just going to walk through this briefly. Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming you're, you, you want a presentation from me?
Yeah, we're going to need a presentation. Just given, uh...
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, slide number one is a table, and I have a typo in the table, actually. Um, the, but I'll, I'll show that. So this proposal is before the committee is differently constituted. I was not before the committee at the time, back in November. There were eight variances at the time, and the typo is the, is in the eighth variance. Um, so in the gray box in the bottom line at 8.5 meters, the actual request was 10.81 meters. What's happened since then is the, the owner has worked with, uh, with planning, we've worked with planning, the owner has met with neighbors and handed out letters on two occasions, and ongoing discussions continue in terms of questions and, and answers. And I think that there's some agreement to disagree on, on a number of items, and that way, that's why you see some letters of objection. So in terms of, uh, the variances before the panel today, the driveway width at 3.66 meters, that's actually smaller than the existing driveway width, which is just over four meters. The floor space index has been reduced from 0.79 to 0.66. If we go to slide number two, we'll see that the proposal fits completely within as-of-right permissions, both in terms of building length, building depth, side yard setbacks, rear yard setback, front yard setback. The as-of-right is shown in the green outline, so it can be, uh, larger. There's a blue footprint that shows the existing building, so you see the buildings being moved away from some of the neighboring properties. The, um, proposed lot coverage is actually 26%, which is quite, quite minor or modest, and there's no landscaping variances to the front or the back. On the next slide, you'll see it's a similar, um, site plan image, but I'm showing the third floor. The third floor is recessed from the front wall, and it's, uh, quite a distance away, four, 4.3 to 5.5 meters back from the front wall. And that's a gray outline is the third floor. The green outline is the permitted as-of-right third floor. And I appreciate that there's a floor space index variance before the panel today, but if this were to be constructed as a multiplex, that green is the outline of the third floor, and there would be no floor space index variance. On slide number four, at the top of the page, there's, uh, some 3D or exonometric views. Part of what has occurred in the revisions is a sculpting of the building, a reduction in the wall height and increased sloping. So in the upper right, the rear exonometric view, that shows a, uh, uh, three, um, skylights, uh, which replace what was originally proposed as a vertical wall with doorway and, and fenestration. And all of this is within the, the as-of-right in terms of eaves. In the middle image on this slide, we're going to see where the subject site sits. Two houses to the right of the subject site, there's a building that has three stories. Two houses to the left of the subject site are, is a building that has, uh, a third-story recessed, and a couple, and several houses to the left as well, eight houses to the left have three stories. And we'll see some images on the next slide. In the bottom of the next slide, slide number five, thank you staff for that. On the bottom of this, uh, slide, this is an image of 233 Glenview Avenue. So the two photographs at the bottom. And that third floor is also recessed beyond a hip roof, a two-story hip roof. And what you'll see is in the right-hand image of that, of that, uh, 233 Glenview is a vehicle. That vehicle, the top of that vehicle is basically where the first floor is located. Um, the, one of the submissions that was made showed an incorrect or exaggerated, uh, insertion of the proposed elevation, and I've just corrected that, and that's shown on the left-hand side in the upper left. The wall height is actually much lower than what is being shown or proposed. On slide six, we see that there's a diversity of residential character, including tigo garages and two levels of living above, three stories, in various formats. And on slide number seven, we'll see that a recent, uh, committee of adjustment approvals for minor variances include floor space index, and what is being proposed here fits within the existing fabric. So subject to any variant, any questions, Mr. Chairman? Uh, submit that the application satisfies all four tests for minor variance. Uh, planning staff have no concerns, urban forestry has no concerns, transportation has conditions of approval regarding the site plan notations, which we're happy to accept. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romano. Uh, no questions, uh, from us, uh, at least yet.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, anyone here to speak to this? Please come on down and state, state your name and address for us, please.
Before we get started, can you put appendix A for 239 Glenview's, um, objection letter? Just so that we don't waste into my five minutes? It's for 239 Glenview Avenue. I know there's a lot of objection letters, so it might take a little time to find that, so. Yeah, it's this one, so just scroll down to appendix A. Um, thank you very much, Chairman and Committee. Um, my name is Ivan Ma. Uh, I'm the owner of 239 Glenview, immediately west of the subject property. Since November, the applicant has made no meaningful attempt to appease, to appease the neighborhood's key concerns, which are GFA and integrated garage. We are not supportive of the increase in GFA, and this plan is not appropriate for the street and neighborhood. The applicant's presentation just showed the diversity on the street. It shows houses with three stories, yes. It shows houses with garages, yes. There are zero precedents for houses with integrated garages and three stories on the street. During the committee, committee meeting for 187 Glenview, this committee already noted that 187 and 189 sticks out, but this proposal dials it up to 11 as it towers over anything on the street as shown right there. These models are based on the architect's own dimension shown from a perspective, whereas the architect's rebuttal that they just gave is based on a flat front profile that doesn't show the perspective. So no, these are not exaggerated. The integrated garage requires that the house is built up. Add three stories on top of this, and you see in the aerial view, which is the most important, how it dwarfs anything around it. 235 and 239 can stare out their back and see a big brick wall with no privacy. I repeat again, there is no precedent for three stories and an integrated garage. Two, this is anything but minor, as 0.66 times GFA is 189% of the limit. The applicant's present, uh, presentation, slide seven, actually showed you what they considered as precedence on Glenview and Glen Grove. So I'm not cherry picking these, I'm just using what they showed. 235 Glenview isn't appropriate because that lot is a .6 times GFA limit because it's smaller, so I excluded that. The average GFA of the ones that went to COA highlighted is 0.52 times with a standard deviation of 0.07 times. 0.66 times is two standard deviations bigger than the average house that went to COA. If you include then the houses that didn't go to COA, the average is 0.4 times, and the standard deviation is 0.09. 237 Glenview is over three standard deviations from the average. In plain language, statistically, three standard deviation means that only one in 370 houses should be this far from the average, and only one in 740 houses is this big. This is more, this is rare, um, three standard deviations. Of note, there are only 113 houses that they showed in their precedent list. The most recent large new developments approved on Glenview are 187 and 189. By GFA square footage, 237 is over 17% larger than 187 and a whopping 35% greater than 189. So this is a materially larger mansion than anything else on Glenview. Three, the design of the third floor could make neighbors' chimneys noncompliant with other bylaws. Um, if you can scroll to appendix C, please. The owners of 237 has explicitly ignored our request to try to mitigate this issue. We've canvassed neighbors we could reach, and a vast majority of them have significant, significant issues with how this owner is conducting themselves. Four, we don't believe this plan meets the intent of the city's official plan. The project will negatively impact stormwater runoff. I'm not going to go there, given the fact like the previous presentation and what they were talking about, and this is getting approved anyways, that was getting approved. Um, additionally, we do not believe this helps the municipality increase the range of housing types, unless the goal is to encourage more luxury mansions that would price out retirees and starting families. The owner's legal address shows they are living in a 12,000 square foot mansion designed by the agent and the agent's mother that is already more capable than housing multi-generations, since that is their alleged intent. In conclusion, the applicant's mother already verbally threatened us to cut down the tree in the back. Um, all we're asking the COA to do is deny the GFA variance and the integrated garage approach. And B, require the owners of 237 to sign a binding contract satisfactory to us that we require them to pay for any remediation work required due to their actions. This is a significant pushback from neighbors on this develop, you can see there's significant pushback from neighbors on this development by the numbers of objections filed. The proposal is not in character and would set a really bad precedent on this street and this neighborhood. That concludes my prepared remarks. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Bartolo?
Uh, just one for the, uh, for the speaker here. What, what would your opinion of this project be if the building length or depth was significantly shortened? Because they could do the integrated garage, there's no variance for the garage, there's no variance for the height, there's no variance for anything on the streetscape. In theory, if they just made the building shorter, they'd be in compliance.
Look, I think, I think the length is fine. I think where, where we have an issue is, is with the GFA, which is the variance. Um, and I think the .66 times, as I noted, is, it is a very, statistically, it is very, very big, um, for something on the street. As I said, this three standard deviations based on the precedent sets that they set.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Doug Kelly. My wife and I have lived at 248 Glenview for just over 42 years. So today I have some comments of my own, but I'm also representing the owners of 235 Glenview Avenue, John Gleason and Patricia Billsland, as they're out of the country, and I would like to read a statement they prepared for me. So this is from Pat and John. Neighbor consultations were information sharing sessions with no seeking or responding to any real concerns. The architect did not submit any views that were able to give the neighbors an understanding of the scale of the project and context to the homes on the street. In fact, questions that we had were never answered. As an example, what would be done to accommodate the grade difference between 235 and 237? We are not architects. As a result, we used a well-regarded modeling app, 3D Rhino, in order to obtain the information that was most important to us, the proposed elevations in context to surrounding homes as opposed to the one-dimensional drawings. Even without those elevations, we could clearly see that the proposed structure does nothing to enhance the neighborhood and in fact would set a new precedent for the street. A three-story, really almost four, given the integrated garage, structure that exceeds FSI in a way not seen before on the street. The neighbors have responded from one end of the street to the other by submitting letters of objection. This structure is not just a problem to the immediate neighbors, it's problematic and undesired by the entire street. There is no precedent for it. Toronto is a caring city. Toronto is clean, green, and sustainable. Toronto invests in quality of life. Toronto protects and improves quality of life for all, including safety, health, and social and economic well-being and inclusion. These are the principles found in the strategic plan for the city of Toronto. How are these principles abided to with the current submission to the COA? They're not. We ask the committee to clearly and resoundingly reject the proposal as it currently stands. At least that's, that's from 235. Now from me, uh, I just want to mention, I'm really disappointed 235 could not attend today because of their travel plans. Their submission is quite comprehensive, and I hope that all of the things they've identified, like GFA, consequences of construction, obstruction of sightlines, proximity to their house, and loss of privacy all enter into your decision. I also wanted to share my own concerns that this is not a minor thing. My wife and I are considering a renovation of under 50 square feet. Now, I'll probably be back here as an applicant. That I consider minor. This one I cannot regard as minor, given the size of the increase. Uh, the footprint, oh, no. So anyway, so the proposal is anything but minor at 237, increasing the GFA to 66%, a level which is definitely way above the norm. One of the things I, this, the applicant has shown us a bunch of photos, and although they do show variety, there is no example of a three-story home with an integrated garage. The photos also demonstrate that the third floor can be added without destroying the architectural elements that the homeowners on Glenview value and want to retain. It's also interesting to note on the applicant's submission, they have maps of the GFA approvals, but the maximum range they identified is 51%. I believe it would be more useful if the information presented was approvals over 60%, so we could see just how common this level of, of building was. I have to assume that they haven't included those numbers because there's not enough examples to support their position. The other thing I'd like to address in closing is the consultation. If you start at 237 and go west for two houses, and then cross the street, that's where I live. I'm in very close proximity to where they want to build. Even though I live that close, the applicant started the process but never approached my property, me or my wife, not in person or by dropping off any kind of information. When they deferred the project, it was stated the deferral was to allow consultation with neighbors. But again, we were never approached in any way, either directly or in writing. All of our neighbors were left out of the process and were not consulted. But I think that the number of objections filed is a really good indicator of how the residents of the street feel. No one believes this house is appropriate for the area we live in. In conclusion, the application should be not considered minor. It's got an excessive and inappropriate GFA. The view from the street is dramatically different, wider than most houses, taller than its neighbors, with a flat roof design that results in a more massive and blocky appearance. I request that you reject this proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to present my concerns and questions, if you have them.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please come down.
Thank you. Daniel Simmons, 231 Glenview Avenue. And I have a letter. And if that could be pulled up. And to the last page where I have a survey of many of the houses on the street, please.
Keep going.
231 Glenview, or you could search for Daniel. 231. Perhaps search for Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S. Yes, I took a picture of each and every house on the street. And it's condensed within one page, one or two pages. It was after the first application. Sorry, I think it must have been.
Yeah, let's, let's pull it up.
I, I think it would be helpful to have in case you want to ask me questions while it's on screen.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Niffel.
Yes.
There we go.
And just to explain what you're looking at, this is a photo that I took just at the time of the application, obviously, late fall, of each house on our portion of Glenview. Those are the street numbers. Okay, anyhow. I live at 231. First of all, just a quick side note. This Rhino 3D, that's the name of the software, this 3D model that was created, presented by Mr. Ma, and may be referenced as inaccurate by the applicant. I'm the person who made that model, so just to state that. It's, I traced off of the applicant's architectural drawings. So the 3D model that you saw with an aerial view showing the massing of the house, to my belief, that's accurate within fractions of an inch. You see that in the document. What I couldn't assess for, and this is presented cleanly on my presentation, is we don't know the heights of the adjoining houses, so I gave a guesstimate and gave my, you know, plus or minus. So I want to state that upfront. That's an accurate 3D model. If the applicant comes back and says, "This is not inaccurate," I traced off of the architectural drawings. I oppose this. I want to make a point about the garage and just what that means. Keep in mind that if you're building a new house, including the garage, this means that you're eviscerating that part of the lawn, so you are increasing the impermeable area at large of our city. So this evisceration of permeable surfaces in our city, this is kind of a long-term effect that you don't, you know, you'd have to see through the decades on our street has been happening, as neighbor after neighbor after neighbor has wanted to carve out a piece of their lawn so that the two houses that never had an original private driveway could, okay. So that's been happening long-term, and it's a gradual shift of our street from lawns, trees, to basically houses and, you know, parking lot spaces for SUVs in front. So that's part of the character that we're losing. The height, what is the meaning of the height of the house? At 231, if you want it, it won't really show you. At 231, which is where I live, on the back, we are in fact experiencing what, I'm sorry, not the, well, the height and the length, forgive me, the length. We have two neighbors on either side that have additions, probably from the late 70s, maybe early 80s. So the effect, if you're in the house in the middle of one of these new monster builds, is you're really boxed in. The two houses that we have on either side of 231, as I said, are more historical additions. They're much more modest, they don't go that deep as the new house. 233 Glenview has a third story, so there's more of that boxed-in effect, but we still have trees, sunlight, grass. But that's the effect of allowing this kind of, you know, monster build. You end up boxed in, and the longer the house is, you're really having the back of your house and your property, where your backyard starts, now being enclosed. This is not the garden, you know, the garden experience of the street originally. There's another thing that I'd like to say as quickly as I can. Forgive my naivete when it comes to what you can, you know, vote on. I just want to make something clear. In the discussions between the neighbors and the architect and the owners, it just struck me as interesting and a little bit unfair. There is no family moving in to this new house. There is no, you know, they're not choosing it because the kids are going to attend John Ross down the street. There's no family, there's no couple. This was purchased by the owner or owners, and neighbors met with us and the architect. So what I'm getting at is, the neighbors have objections based on lived experience and the quality of our life, having been on the street in some cases for decades. We could not negotiate in our friendly meets with the architect and the owners. We couldn't negotiate on good faith, because there is no personal set, you know, personal defined interest of anybody moving in to negotiate with. These are, you know, this is a modernization that's entirely generic, and as one neighbor pointed out, basically, it's potential for a flip. So I just want to note that it seems a little unfair, speaking, for example, to your last application about this couple wanting to age in place in their house. We're making these objections about the quality of the street, the light, the privacy, based on, you know, living there in practice. And the last thing, versus architectural designs, there was no reason for them to negotiate on pulling back any of these. There were no familial, like, family concerns that were driving any of these changes. Okay. Last, I just want to say, my reason for giving you this survey was I would ask respectfully that the council is careful when you talk about precedent. Precedent gets very tricky if you do an entire survey of all of the different kinds of renovations and amendments that houses have experienced over the years. I'll give you a quick example, because I know I'm running out of time. When you talk about an integrated garage, it's actually not a contemporary thing, and this was something that I was refreshed on when I actually made this survey, despite having grown up on this street. There are, I think, three, if not four, original houses within the original setback, original height, you know, that small box, that have an integrated garage. So I'm just speaking to the fact that any variance you want to consider, there may be a precedent that is historical within keeping of the neighborhood, and also invisible, because it was done in, in such a way, it was towards the back of the house, you don't really see it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you. Okay, everybody has spoken to this item that's here in the gallery. Staff, we have some neighbors online.
To you, Mr. Chair, we have Javier Way or Helen online, but we tried to unmute her, and she needs to accept the request.
All right, thank you.
To you, Mr. Chair, we called Helen Way, and she, the phone number, nobody picked up.
All right, very well. Let's move on to our next speaker. That's it. All right, great. Okay, I'd like to turn it back to Mr. Romano to address some of the concerns that were brought up by the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for everyone's participation. So I'll start off first with, again, what transpired after that November 2024 deferral. There were two meetings. The first meeting, December 8th, had seven neighbors attend, including both abutting neighbors, the east and west. And that obviously had discussions and exchange of information. Following that meeting, there was another one, 10 days later, on December 18th, with both abutting neighbors. And some of the elements that are included in this revision were discussed at both of those meetings, or the product of at least the first, the first meeting. And that includes the reductions in the building, and I'll speak to that a little shortly. But it also includes privacy screens that were requested and added to the rear ground floor deck, which is about 1.5 meters, projecting from the rear wall off the ground floor. What transpired even before then was urban forestry asked and the owner agreed and had exploratory air spading occurring, where neighbors dropped by to find out what was going on, because obviously there was an arborist on site. So quite a bit of neighborhood discussion, communication. Apologize if some people were either not in attendance or weren't communicating to, to attend or were informed by neighbors to, to attend. Certainly, there's, there's been an open forum. In terms of the building itself, and we look at the building footprint, and we can go to Slide number two of my presentation. This building has been reduced in length up to two meters. It differs on each floor, but the first floor is now 15.99 meters in length. The second floor is 15.99 meters in length, and the third floor is 8.82 meters in length. And it is recessed from the front wall in a manner that allows for the integration and continuation of the hip roof at the front and a slant roof at the back. This building is in no way, shape, or form a building that's going to be viewed as three stories, either from the street or from the back. And though three stories is permitted, although building height and the wall height is all permitted. The wall height, an important element here in terms of massing and distribution, is 7.76 meters. What is permitted is 8.5. So that is another illustration of the sensitivity in the massing that's been integrated into the design. Physical features, whether it's the integral garage, location of the first floor, which is compliant at less than 1.2 meters in height. Each story, they are all permitted by the zoning bylaw. They are not the subject of anything under Section 45.1 of the Planning Act. Neither of the four tests apply to any of those features that are permitted as a right and incorporated as a right, including the integral garage. And over the past several years, we have seen vehicles- And over the past several years, we have seen vehicles being stolen because they're out in the open. And this owner wishes to have their vehicle secured within an integral garage. That is permitted and it does not increase the, uh, massing or scale and it is not of keeping with what's occurring on the street. There are several properties that have integral garages. The driveway is less width and occupies less space than the existing driveway. So there is no drainage issue or soft ski issue or permeability issue. Um, so in terms of what is occurring in this instance, I heard from Mr. Simons that he prepared based on tracing the drawings. The drawing, the three D images that were submitted by under the, uh, address of number two thirty-nine, Mr. Ma, show the bottom of the second story windows exceeding the eaves of the neighboring house. That is not true. That is not accurate. That shows that either the proposals or is, is shown to be too tall in large or the neighboring houses, which he admitted, uh, were not accurate, are not accurate because it doesn't depict it. And I've shown the elevation where there is, uh, um, more accuracy. So I suspect that the variances are minor in nature. Planning staff, uh, agree, including, uh, forest base index. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Questions? All right. Let's take this into committee.
Uh, Mr. Chair, through you, just to, uh, kick things off and keep it moving. Based on the submission here, um, the FSI is not really triggering any other variances, nor do most of the arguments made by the applicants, uh, reflect, uh, comments actually based on the variances proposed here. So a lot of issues with the architectural style, the integrated garage and the look from the street, uh, which I understand from a, a neighborhood consistency and, uh, character point of view, but, uh, is not necessarily relevant to what's being presented here. So while numerically, you know, larger than typical, uh, it's keeping within all of the other, um, setback requirements, green space requirements, uh, ground cover requirements. And the driveway variance, I don't have an issue with. It's just a matter of centimeters there. So all, all in all, I have no issues with the application.
Okay. I, I, I have some concerns with respect to the FSI variance. I think just to one of the, uh, neighbors' submissions, there really is no house with an integral garage, two stories above, and then a third, what they're calling a third floor further back. I, I'm usually a fan of those third stories, especially when they're stepped back. I, I think it's a good modest form of intensification. But in this case, I mean, there's, there's few houses to begin with where you have an integral garage and then two stories above. I think there was one or two examples of recent construction in the neighborhood. And I, I can see there's already some challenges with respect to fit and scale, uh, just given the fact that the homes on this street have a very consistent height with respect to their front main wall. So as soon as you start to go above that, it, I mean, essentially stands out. In this case, I, I don't know. And I, I, I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, you know, perspectives on both sides. I, in terms of, you know, one saying that one's not accurate in terms of measurements, the other one is. I, I don't know. I, I, I have a little bit of concern with the applicant's submission. Uh, just I'm looking at the scale figure in relationship to the garage door and it's, they're almost the same height. Which they relate. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough call, uh, in this case, uh, for me. The, the integral, uh, I'll, I'll bring up the, the, there's no variance for integral garage. So, uh, there's nothing to stop them, uh, from doing that. But it, I, I do also acknowledge it's, it's a narrow lot width. And I'm, I'm not sure of variance to support a wider driveway simply because, you know, the applicant puts forward and said, well, it's less than the existing, um, is good planning rationale. Uh, the actual extension of the driveway actually looks to be a more of a walkway. If you look at the actual curb cut on the street, it is actually set back. It's a pretty narrow driveway to begin with. The existing condition really facilitates a drive aisle, uh, down the side of the house. So I think if there is an integrated garage or a driveway, it really needs to be sensitive, uh, to the kind of scale and proportion of the lot. But to your submission, there's not triggering other variances. So it, it becomes difficult to, you know, evaluate. You're, you're essentially evaluating it purely based on the FSI, right?
That's right. And if you, if the applicant just chopped a few meters off the back of it, they wouldn't even be before the committee.
I didn't even have issue with the building depth. I think it was a reasonable, given the lock depth.
That would lower the, that would lower the FSI. You'd have the same facade.
Yeah. It was more to do with the, the massing that it facilitates from the streetscape.
Which you're allowed to do.
You're allowed to do a lot of things, but, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean it's good. Um, I don't know. Uh, see, Mr. Niffel, thoughts on this one?
I had trouble with this one as well. Um, I, I don't think, excuse me, what is proposed fits into the neighborhood character. I, I'm very concerned with the implications on the streetscape. Um, and if you can't hear me, let me know. I'm losing my voice. Um, I went back and forth on this. I realize and appreciate the fact that the, the applicant, um, reduced the FSI from the last time round. I think last time round it was point seven nine, now it's point six six. Um, but what, what actually did it for me, and thank you, is the, the profile of the photographs of all the houses on the street. I found that very, very instructive. Um, and I came to exactly the same conclusion that while there are a few cases where there is a third floor sort of extension, normally buried within a roof rather, rather comfortably.
Usually a dormer or some sort of angular plane.
Yeah, they're nicely fitted into the, there aren't any that have kind of a third floor and a, an integral garage. And the two together, to me, really, um, caused this to stand out and not in, not in a good way. So I, I'm, after much deliberation, I'm not able to support this because of its implication on the existing neighborhood character.
You get a sense of the scale from the axonometric in relationship to the neighboring dwellings. But I'm not sure what, you know, given the setback of the, the third, uh, how much of that is really visible from the street? It's almost nothing.
Um, except for the side panels of the dormers, you're going to see that. I, I think you're going to see more of the third floor in this one than you would on.
Just be mindful that that third, the starting point for that third has to facilitate that seven or eight foot garage, integral garage level. So the first floor is actually really raised up quite a bit with the second. And actually, I, I will note that the example that was provided, the recent build with the integral garage, um, I'll buy it minor. That second, uh, story above the garage actually, um, is, it's got a bit of a taper on the side. It comes up as a, a bit more of a dormer. In this case, it's the whole front main wall. It's tough. It's rare that we, uh, it's rare that like just based on an FSI, I've, you know, got concerned. But I, I really think that's what the FSI variance is there for. It's to essentially look at the massing that it essentially produces and then questions whether or not that fits within OP policies of neighborhood. I don't know. We've got, I, I am the fourth person here today, so I, I realize I may not even get a vote on this. Um, but Mr. Kubu, it's been a lie in your hands.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think the, the applicant has made, uh, hmm, really some changes to the initial application. I remember we, I was here in November twenty twenty-four and including having a sort of discussions with the neighbors. However, when I review overall, when I go through the submissions, I'm quite not confident to, to support this more, to, to support this application at this stance. Uh, the, the neighbors have shown off some part where some of the plans performed by the, the applications, the applicants, to me, don't seem conclusive. So I'm not in a position to support this application in this second time.
Sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring forth a motion to refuse the application um, because I don't believe that it actually, um, meets the intent and purpose of the bylaw and the official plan relative to neighborhood character.
Okay. Second, I'm Mr. Kubu. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Bartolo? All right. Uh, that motion passes. The application is refused. Okay. Uh, let's take, it's six twenty-one. We'll resume at six thirty. Is that okay? Yeah? All right. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah. Who's serving your breakfast?
Alright, and we are back. Next item. Oh, just a moment. Alright, we dealt with item number sixteen already. Did we? No, we have not, but we do have a request for deferral. Yeah, no, item number sixteen, we have a deferral request? Just now.
Hey, good afternoon, uh, good evening, sorry.
Good afternoon. Uh, your name and address, sir?
Edwin Cheng, forty-seven Spears of Oakville. Um, I know a request to defer was requested, um, but we just found out today that there's no objection letters and staff have no opinions against this, so if it's okay with everyone here, I'm sorry because I know you guys had a long day, uh, do you think we can, uh, we're happy to proceed and hopefully get this done quickly?
Yes, that is, uh, that is your, uh, your choice. We have reviewed the, uh, application material, uh, in advance of the hearing today. Um, I am going to, uh, actually before we get to that, uh, let me just introduce, uh, item number sixteen, forty-six Manor Haven Road. The purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. Uh, this, uh... There was a previous application, uh, with respect to the subject property, that was before the committee on November twenty-first, uh, which, uh, was approved in part. Uh, we've got four variances, uh, that you're back for today. Building length, building depth, lot coverage, and east and west main wall heights. On file, material from the applicant. And, uh, your... Your, if you haven't, did you give us your name and address? It's been a long day. Let's get your name and address again.
No, I did, but I can give it again, yeah, yeah. Edwin Cheng, forty-seven Spears of Oakville.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cheng, alright. Okay, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to ask for a presentation, uh, from you. We'll get the, we'll get the clock up. I realize there's nobody here to speak, uh, in objection or support. I, uh, I, I do have a little bit of concern with respect to the length, depth, lot coverage. Um, I believe last time there was, um, some concern with the length and depth. Uh, it looks like you guys have modified it. So, uh, yeah, just to help you kind of focus in on, uh, those, those three variances, uh, and I'll ask my colleagues whether they have any questions. I'm seeing head shake, alright, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, oh, I won't take five minutes, I promise. Um, so I'll, I'll speak mainly to the three variances, the fourth one is, you know, minor, minor, minor in nature. Um, so what we're proposing here is pretty cookie cutter for the redevelopment that's going on in Neighborhood, if you're familiar with Neighborhood. This is exactly what you'll see, the lots are very narrow, they're around fourteen meters in depth, uh, but, you know, they go down pretty deep. So, where I'm going with all this is, the variances that we're asking for really relate to, oh, thank you. The three variants we, um, are requesting kind of all bundled together to do with the, the length of the building, obviously. Uh, what I do want to say is, from the front perspective, we're completely flush. So, if you're standing in front of the building, you're not going to see any of the variances we're requesting. Similarly, if you're standing at the back of the building, uh, especially those neighbors in the back, you're also not going to see any other variances because we're completely contained within the setbacks of the, of the zoning. Previously, as you mentioned, uh, we did come in with a similar variance, which was greater in nature, but we did encroach into the rear setback. With this new, um, proposal, uh, revision, we're completely contained within the required setbacks, meaning only if you're, if you take a drone and you take an aerial view and you take out your scale ruler and then do some measurements, will you realize that we're asking for, um, this variance here? Um, and also, one thing I want to add, uh, is between the last hearing and this date, uh, this hearing and around February, uh, there was a very similar variance that was approved on the street right behind us, uh, at, uh, seventy-four Roberta Drive. That's just, just the street right behind this property. The variance approved there was very, requested was very similar to what we're asking for here. There, they asked for twenty-one point six-two meters for the building length and the same twenty-one six-two point, uh, sixty meters for the building depth and a very similar lot coverage area. Uh, what we're asking for here is lower than that, we're only asking for the nineteen point five-eight, and I know precedents don't really translate to material, but, you know, I do want to state that, that to give a consideration, especially how recent it was, um, it was approved. So, long and short of it is, if you're standing in front of a building, you're not going to see the variance, if you're standing in the back of the building, you're not going to see a variance. I think what we're proposing here is very consistent with kind of the neighborhood evolving typology that, that's going on in this area, especially on these two streets that I'm referring to. Uh, so, for that reason, we feel that this, uh, this revision is minor in nature and is consistent with both the zoning and like the previous, uh, committee of adjustment decisions.
Okay. And, uh, the, the comparison you gave is seventy-four, uh, Roberta?
Yeah, that was A zero six zero two twenty-four NY, and I just realized it's the same architect, which is embarrassing, but, yeah.
Alright. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Nitfil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have you had any, um, consultations with the neighbors on either side, uh, and what their views might be about the length of your building, because it extends, in one case, a fair bit back, and in the other case, moderate bit beyond, beyond their rear walls?
Yeah, uh, the, part of the reason for deferral was to kind of engage them, but they, we haven't had any, heard any issues from them for this hearing or the previous ones, and I just want to reiterate, we, we are still within the rear set, uh, rear yard setback.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't catch the first part of your answer, you did in fact engage with them or not?
Oh, no, no, we, we haven't, but we haven't heard from them, uh, in, during the course of both applications.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, sir. So, if I may rephrase my colleagues' questions, uh, did you take step to, uh, engage the neighbors?
Uh, no, not yet.
Okay, and, um, I just want to get, uh, so it, it just, in terms of planning rationale for the length and depth, uh, the number is essentially taken from a recent approval at number seventy-four, is that, that's fair observation?
I'm sorry, seventy-four Roberta Drive.
Right, yeah, okay, um, I, is the, I, I asked this, uh, of an applicant earlier today, um, in this case, uh, your application, uh, seeks a length and depth variance, uh, to facilitate essentially, uh, a two-story rear main wall, uh, at that depth. Um, is it, is it similar, uh, the qualitative, uh, condition, uh, seventy-four, uh, Roberta? I, I understand from a quantitative standpoint, it's the same number, uh, but from a qualitative, uh, impact, is, is, uh, the massing similar?
Yeah, speaking of obvious bias, but, um, the, the building types, the size, the massing of the neighbors of both properties are, are very similar. The only difference is, uh, the neighbor here on the plan, uh, east side, um, they are still kind of in the original, uh, they're one of the original homes in the area, uh, but there's pretty apparent that any redevelopment on that site will look like every other building on, on this block.
Okay.
So, and so, sorry, just to answer your question a little bit further, from a qualitative perspective, um, the design and kind of the facade, um, details are very similar, um, and the way it impacts the neighbor is pretty much identical.
Same architect as well, right?
Yeah.
Projects, it, the, uh, the, uh, Roberta example, uh, it's pretty familiar, I think I sat on the panel that day as well. Okay, um, any other questions?
Actually, if I, if I may just add a little bit more, um, I'm just looking on this, on the aerial view now. Actually, for Roberta Drive, um, the way the rear part of the building protrudes past the two neighbors is even more extreme, uh, than what we have posed here.
Right. Any other questions? Okay, let's take this into committee brief discussion, followed by motion. Yes, Mr. Nitfil?
I'll start this off, I, I doubt that this will be a majority view, but I am concerned with the depth of the building relative to the building on the, I guess, on the east, notwithstanding the fact it's an existing or a previous build. I'm particularly concerned because there was no consultation, so there was, there's been no feedback from those people determining what the implications might be to them, uh, and I think in that case it is a substantially longer building, and I, I have reservations about that.
Yeah, I, I had concern, similar concerns with the initial, uh, application that was before us recently with length and depth. I, I mean, this certainly is better, part, part of the issue that I have is, a lot of times when you get houses of this scale, you typically get a little bit more depth in the back. You know, I'm glad to see there's no rear yard setback variance, they've eliminated that by cutting the building back. But, I mean, you look at the block form of the street, certainly the immediate block, again, there's a pretty clear delineation of where the rear main wall, at least a two-story rear main wall kind of aligns, and this kind of extends back behind all the buildings. I, I, maybe I just provide a little bit of context about the example given to the recent approval, uh, recent approval block over. It did facilitate, uh, same depth variance. Um, it was a little different in nature in that it, it facilitated two bump outs of the rear main wall, not the entire rear main wall. And also, that particular lot has a lot more depth to it. A lot more depth, yeah, they've got a pretty big backyard, so I, I do take the applicant makes a good point, though, um, the relationship to the neighbor on, uh, Roberta... Is, you know, it does create a similar condition, but it is slightly mitigated by the fact that it is a pie, bit of a pie-shaped lot, so as you go back, as the building goes back, the neighbors actually start to face away, and you get more of a side yard setback. Um, and the neighbors as well, they also have more, uh, lot depth, such that if the neighbor's building is going back, they have more space essentially to, you know, when you're, my concern is, if you, every, and I said this in the previous, uh, hearing, if you think every house on that street has a two-story rear main wall that extends that far back, what is left of that green space back there? And is that appropriate, uh, just looking at the proportion of the massing and the building itself to the lot size? Is that, uh, enough? It's a tough one, I mean, they've certainly improved it, but I, I still have some, uh, concern even without the objection, uh, no objection on this. I don't know, Mr. Bartolo, you're a little more lax on these.
Yeah, I, I tend to be a little, uh, a little more lax on these, you're right. So, the point is well made that the house extends, you know, a, a decent amount beyond the adjacent neighbors. Uh, to that point, they could, they don't have a rear yard setback condition that they're triggering, so in theory, the placement of their house is permissible. The placement of it, not the overall length necessarily, right? So, if they chopped off a portion of the front, they could keep it where it is at the back or vice versa, right? So, in saying that, while we may have a concern about how much of it extends beyond, in theory, they could do that regardless of our opinion on, on that specific subject, right? If they felt that they wanted more front yard as opposed to rear, which is not typically the case, but they could. Numerically, it's not outrageous in my opinion, it's, it's a little bit more than what we may typically see. I would lean in favor of approval overall.
We're down to four, so I'm looking at, uh, my vote's out.
Yeah, to be fair with you, when I, um, the, the applicant indicated that they did not actually, uh, engage the neighbor, I was surprised because it took, it took them this time, uh, and one of the reasons, uh, what, I, I, they had enough time to engage the neighbors and, and understand some of the concerns from those neighbors and improve this application. As it stands, I still have a lot of reservations about the application, so I'm quite not sure if I, I can support it at this time.
Well, I can put forward a motion, we can give this a try.
You can try, I, I, you may get through with a modified motion, but...
I don't know that, what I would modify at this point.
Alright, Mr. Bartolo.
Listen, by my estimation, it's, uh, it's a reasonable ask, uh, although maybe just on the edge of that, so therefore I'll put forward a motion to approve this application.
Alright, do I have a second or... Alright, no second or, motion fails.
My motion would just be to put forward, I would like to put forward a motion to indicate that this application does not meet the test and, uh, this, this committee reject it.
Alright, second or... It's a, a motion of refusal, yep. Uh, second by Mr. Nitfil, all in favor? Opposed, Mr. Bartolo, uh, the application is refused. Okay. Item seventeen, twelve seventy-five Finch Avenue West, the purpose of the application is to add office use to the list of permitted use and remove the parking requirement for office, retail, medical office, and laboratory use. We have two variances related to the purpose, on file, material from the applicant, report from community planning, memo from development engineering, two memos from transportation, and an email from Metrolinks.
Mr. Chair, through you, this was the application where there were two updated memos, one from development engineering and one from transportation.
Alright, uh, staff, do you mind, can we get the most recent memos up for us?
What you see before you is an updated, uh, development engineering or development review memo. What you see before you is an updated, uh, development engineering or development review memo. And then we'll put up the most recent, uh, transportation one.
Uh, development engineering, uh, is now satisfied, they have no requirements anymore longer, yes. Um, okay, yeah, then my notes is that transportation initially, uh, had some concern with respect to the parking reduction, uh, and they've since, uh, reversed their, uh, opinion on that. All right, we have our agent or applicant with us.
Hi, I'm Annorita Papa, sixty-two Sherborne Drive, Maple.
All right.
And, um, I'll speak to the two items. So the first item being that we're asking for the medical office use to be included. Um, this is something that all of our original application that went in in twenty-twelve, then approved in twenty-fourteen, including all the SPA that came after that, was established that this would be a medical office building inclusion. Um, the staff report provided by Toronto, as well as all of our plans, our reports, everything in, went in with medical, so we were actually quite surprised in October when we found out that it wasn't in the zoning, even though it's actually listed in the parking requirements of the zoning. So what we're asking, what planning has told us to do, because there's no administrative correction that we could do, they said to bring it to committee so that we could discuss it, um, just to put it in, in that way, because it is minor. They don't have an objection to the use as it, as they see it as it was always meant to be part of the actual zoning. My only guess is it was missed because in the old bylaw, office use actually lists medical office in their definition. So my assumption is maybe they over, there was an oversight because of that. The zoning examiner that looked at an application in October for a building permit noticed that there is a separate, uh, um, definition for medical use, and then it should be included. So here we are today for that. For the parking reduction, the request for that is really, there was a lot of back and forth with the town just to provide, to show them that we have enough spots. Um, every time a zoning would come up, they would have to explain that. Planning said to reduce the back and forth, you can just have them, uh, remove the minimums because of the fact that we actually have quite a bit of parking. Um, if with our minimums, we would never reach four hundred and seven spots, and the minimum is what the requirement for calculation would be. Uh, originally, transportation didn't understand, uh, there was, there was a lot of confusion, even with, uh, engineering. The reason why they had originally changed is because they thought the building wasn't built already. So in this app, in this request, we're actually not requesting to change the building at all. Uh, and they did, engineering did put in a condition to have the four hundred and seven spots remain, and that is perfectly fine with us. Uh, we have zero intentions of removing any of the spots. Uh, we're not going to go in and fill in the underground parking or anything like that. So, um, they realized that four hundred and seven spots is more than enough for our current uses, and if there were to be a different use that were to be presented, it would go through a different, a zoning application. So it would be dealt with at that time.
Okay, questions?
Do you want to see the transportation, the condition that she was talking about?
Yeah, let's.
Okay, well, we'll put up the trend again, it's to maintain the four hundred and seven spots.
Yeah, maintain the minimum of four hundred and seven spots on site. I'll also mention, Metrolinks has their comments, uh, they came in a week ago. They're, they want to see drawings if we're going to be construction, constructing anything, and we obviously are not doing anything to the building.
Ready? All right.
Uh, yeah, thank you to the applicant, uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I think what's being.
We'll take this, just to take this into committee.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, I think what's being asked here is very reasonable, the use is in keeping with the intent of the building and the area, I believe, so. Uh, therefore, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application subject, uh, to the site maintaining a minimum of four hundred and seven spaces as per the, uh, conclusions in the transportation memo attached.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Nitfeld, all in favor. All right, that's unanimous, the application is approved. Okay, moving along here, uh, item number eighteen, ninety-five Snyder Avenue. The purpose of the application is to permit secondary parking and reduced landscaping in the front yard. We have three variances before us for front yard parking, front yard landscaping, and rear platform area. On file material from the applicant, memos from urban forestry, a memo from transportation, and an email from Metrolinks. All right, we got Mr. Romano back.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Members of the panel, Franco Romano, Action Planning three twenty-one, legislature.
All right, just give us a moment here.
Works.
So, um, Mr. Romano, I'm going to ask for some comments, just given the, uh, reports from forestry and transportation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So if, uh, if staff can bring up slide one on my presentation, please. Transportation has got it wrong in this instance. And why they've got it wrong is because this, in the memo, in a few places in that memo, they talk about, the subject site is located in the former city of Toronto, and it is not. This is a former city of York, and if staff can bring up my slide, please, my presentation slides. If my time can be paused while my slides come up, please. Excellent, terrific. So Snyder Avenue is, uh, is a street that goes, uh, north-south, so apologize for putting it in this direction on the slides, but it is east of Taledonia and north of Egmonton. And what, what we'll see on Long Snyder Avenue is, uh, boulevard, front yard parking is quite common. Uh, some of these, uh, access integral garages, but many of them do not. They are front pad parking, and we'll see in relation to where the subject site's front lot line is, everybody else's front lot line, the dwellings, sorry, the, the, the parking areas, including vehicles are routinely parked in the boulevard. There is no municipal licensing that's required for boulevard parking in this location because this is the former city of York, it is not. And it's, and it was governed by bylaw one dash eighty-three, where front yard parking was permitted. What you'll see on the subject site, I've shown there it's L-shaped. Uh, the rear off of Shell Avenue, which is the east-west street, uh, shown on the left-hand side, that's about, that's just eight feet, not including fencing. So it's, it's impossible to put your car in there and get in and out of the car. One has to park within the garage in order to exit, and that's unlike other locations. This is also a duplex, there are two dwelling units in here, and the, uh, accessibility of the parking is an important part, and that's why they're proposing the, the front yard parking. When we look to the, to the right-hand side, there's a, a rectangular box that goes left to right. That's Bowie Avenue, and you'll see that that property has a driveway off of Bowie Avenue. There's a car shown there that's parked in the boulevard and partially on private property. And along Snyder Avenue, there's a double car garage located within the building, but those two vehicles are fully located on, in the boulevard. On the south side, sorry, on the, on the lower right-hand side, Snyder and Bowie, you'll see a similar L-shaped lot. That property also has a driveway off of Snyder Avenue, and it has a driveway off of Bowie Avenue. And we'll see actually two vehicles parked off of Bowie in the boulevard, and we don't see any vehicles in, in this here photograph. So in terms of physical context and parking solutions, the proposal is extremely consistent with what occurs within this neighborhood. In terms of L-shaped lots, there's only one other one within the same block that has the exact same condition that is being proposed for the subject site, and there is no municipal license for boulevard parking on those properties because none is required. If we go to photo, the slides number two and three, you'll see, uh, pictures of, of vehicles. Many of those vehicles are parked very close to the sidewalk. What does, what does that mean? That means that they're parking within the, within the boulevard. If staff can bring up the, um, uh, uh, the, the drawing A to B of the, um, of the, uh, plans that the architect has submitted. The proposal is to, uh, have, uh, Aqua Storm grid pavers, and this is A to B. So it's showing the techno block pavers. It's a couple of, uh, if we go up, it's near the top, it's the third page of the plans. These paving stones, if we look at, uh, drawing A to B, uh, that's, that's it right there. So these paving stones have, uh, over thirty-eight percent permeability, and they only occupy fourteen point five centimeters in depth. So quite a bit of the, of what is being proposed here is permeable, but does not count towards, uh, the soft landscaping. So if this permeability were included, the actual variance would be for sixty-eight point five percent. So I would submit that what would be, uh, an appropriate condition is that the parking pad be constructed substantially in accordance with the, with, with, uh, these plans. In terms of the tree, the tree itself could be protected, and it is being protected, it's not being removed. And urban forestry only said that it, that there may be some, some impact, but that it's not a significant impact, quite a bit of the tree. The proposal is two point six two meters away from that tree trunk. Subject to any, uh, questions, I submit that the variance request is minor in nature, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano, uh, just, uh, technical question, uh, is there, uh, is there, trying to understand the, the situation in this neighborhood, uh, whether or not there's permit parking available for Snyder Avenue, or whether, uh, that's prohibited? Do you?
Yes, thank you for, thank you for that question. No, there is no permit parking, there is one hour, uh, parking permitted, I think it's between, uh, eight AM and seven PM. One hour street parking on the subject site side of the street. But the property is located, it's a second property in from, from the intersection, so you wouldn't be able to park on that portion of the street in any event.
Okay, so when you do have a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex on the street, um, what, I, I mean, aside from what's being proposed, what, is there an alternative with respect to parking?
Uh, there is no, there is no alternative.
Okay, fair, fair enough. Yeah.
And I, I apologize, but the, one of the variances actually doesn't have to do with the front pad parking, and I failed to mention that, that's, there's a, there's a platform, and there's a one point five meter, uh, tall privacy screen that's shown on the plans, and my recommendation for, uh, tying it to the plans would incorporate that, that aspect.
Okay, as part of that, uh, privacy screen, is it, did that come about through discussions with the neighbor, or?
Uh, yes, the owner is, is occupying the unit and, and just in discussion, like they, they were okay with no privacy screen, but it was a, it was something that the owner offered, and it was acceptable.
All right, okay, uh, any other questions? Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Romano, could you just clarify for us the privacy screen, uh, it's just on the one side?
Both sides.
Both sides, okay, to height of one point five meters, opaque?
Correct.
All right.
Let's see what it says. I believe it just says privacy screen. Yeah.
Well, translucent. Okay. Uh, any other questions? Okay, all right, uh, thank you, Mr. Romano, uh, let's take this into committee.
I'll be very brief in my opening remarks. While numerically, I, uh, normally would not approve such a, a large reduction in, uh, soft landscaping at the front. When I look at the entire street, almost every single house has an asphalt or concrete driveway all the way along, so in terms of the character, I think it's very consistent with what's going on there.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I think Mr. Romano and his design team here understand that we would have interpretations about the, the, uh, landscape, hence why they've, uh, proposed the, uh, was it the techno block, uh, pavers that, uh, have been specified here. And I, I think that's kind of the, the best middle ground scenario you're going to get in a situation like this. And, uh, that's, that's about it for me.
Yeah, I think in a lot of cases where zoning bylaw and OP are there to protect and preserve existing streetscapes, uh, in this case, uh, it's also helping to take an existing condition and approve upon that. I, I just, I look at the, uh, the development, and I look at what's being proposed, and it, it, I, I think given the use of the permeable pavers, it certainly is a, an improvement, and it's good to see an example set on the street for kind of the direction of where other properties eventually may lead. Um, that's not to say that I think just because something's there, you know, we should sort of maintain it. Uh, you know, you want to, over time, uh, through, uh, you know, gentrification and whatnot have you, uh, you know, you want to see an improvement in some of these, uh, conditions. I, I, I think also the fact that there isn't, uh, to Mr. Romano's, uh, submission, you know, without having a permit parking on the street, I, I mean, it's almost impossible to facilitate, uh, secondary suites, multi-unit, so I, I think we need to be a little bit accommodating. Hundred percent, yeah. Um, no, no comment, all right, looks like you have support for motion, Mr. Bartolo or Mr. Nitfeld?
No, go ahead, I agree with you completely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you, Mr. Romano, for your submission. Um, I'm going to put forward a motion to, uh, approve this application uh, subject to the conditions in the urban forestry memo attached, and, uh, subject to the condition that it, uh, be built substantially in accordance with the north and south elevation.
Yes.
Uh, noting that privacy screen, and subject that, uh, that the driveway, uh, be built with the permeable paver specified here.
Could, could I, um, just suggest that the forestry conditions are one in five, and if you read five, it's denial.
It'd just be number one.
Five is denial, yeah.
Fair enough, yeah.
In the, in the memo, they tell you which one they want.
Yeah.
Can I just sort, can I just clarify the privacy screen wording again, sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I, I, I just said that it'd be built substantially in accordance with the north and south elevations, and I, I just made the comment, which note the privacy screen on it. And.
North and south elevations, which note, they do note the privacy screen on there. Yeah, they do. Uh, just.
Are, are you good with that, Mr. Deputy Secretary? You're comfortable with that?
Sorry, that's, that's what it'd say, we tie substantially in accordance to the north and south elevations, noting the privacy screen.
Yes.
Yeah, whether they want to make that opaque or translucent, leave that out.
It'll, it'll just read, that's the way the condition would read.
Okay.
That's good.
Very good. Second by Mr. Nitfeld, all in favor, all right, unanimous, that is approved. Yes, yes. Okay. All right, well, I've got to pull up our, uh, four PM agenda, just give me a moment here. All right, uh, we are on item number nineteen, first item of the four PM agenda. Apologize to, uh, everyone that is online and in the gallery waiting. Uh, all right, item number nineteen, two sixty-six Brighton Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new. The purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. Variances for main pedestrian height entrance, number of stories, rear platform area and front porch height. On file, material from the applicant, a report from community planning and a memo from urban forestry. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Yes, sir, Adi Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East, good evening.
Welcome back. Uh, sir, uh, you, uh, are there any modifications, uh, you're making today?
Yes, sir, variance number four, I wish to delete it.
Any other changes?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. All right, uh, just given some of the comments I'm seeing, uh, from community planning, uh, going to ask for a brief presentation. Uh, perhaps you can just address some of their concerns with respect to variance number one and number three, uh, as well as, uh, the comment about, uh, the opaque screening, uh, recommendation.
Uh, well, the opaque screening, I have no objection to. However, we were just surprised to, uh, um, see that comment from the planning. We, uh, tried to, uh, reach, uh, didn't get a response. Um, the variances that you're requesting, the, the three remaining variances are not, uh, basically, um, um, resulting any, any additional mass. If I have my support material on display, that can explain. This house, it. My pardon, uh, yeah, this house is a, is a very, very small house, actually. It's gonna be the home to somebody. Uh, you, you can see that I've circled the length of the building is, uh, if I can read it right, is eleven meters sixty-seven. So it's not even twelve meters. We are allowed to have twelve meter, uh, seventeen meters of the building length. Um, uh, the, the coverage is well below the allowable coverage. Uh, uh, my client didn't need that, that big of a house. Uh, um, uh, the three variances, uh, if we go to the next page, we need the three-story variance. Uh, because the basement or the lower level is not deep enough. Uh, um, uh, we thought that it was no, not necessary to, to, to take the basement or excavate the basement. Therefore, it, uh, side being very costly, it would, uh, make the basement unnecessarily too high. Um, and, uh, if we, if we, if we made the basement that deep, then, uh, two of the remaining three variances would be deleted. Uh, the three-story and, and the size of the rear balcony, uh, both of them are basically technical variances. Uh, uh, and, uh, we, 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 we wrote to the planning, we explained all this, we linked their response back. Um, uh, we think that, uh, this is a very, very minor, minor, uh, uh, application. Hard to see any, any, any house, I mean, uh, that you've seen many of them today, um, asking for the building height, building depth, building length, coverage, uh, and, um, similar kind of variances, uh, affecting the building mass. This application has none of those. Uh, we are well within the boundaries prescribed, prescribed by the zoning bylaw. And the coverage, uh, that, that rear balcony, which is technically on the main floor on the first level, the reason it's considered the second level is because the basement is not deep enough. Um, that entire balcony on the backside can be added to the building footprint in its entirety and not generating a coverage, actually more than that, and not generating a coverage. Uh, this house is a, is a very small house. If we, if we just turn pages, uh, the, um, the, the, the reason for that first floor height variance is, uh, the area under the entrance, there is a sunken entrance, and I'm sure you've seen many of these, uh, type applications. Um, that area beneath the main entrance is, uh, we, we have a headroom issue with this. We had to just, uh, lift it slightly, uh, to, to create the, the headroom beneath that. Uh, if we go to the next pages, uh, you can, um, see, um, photos of the, uh, of the buildings, uh, um, in the vicinity on Brighton and the other streets. Uh, let's turn pages, uh, the remaining time that I have, so you can see like sort of a street, uh, skate image of the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, just, uh, to show that what we're proposing is, uh, not only, uh, smaller than these houses, but also do not have, uh, uh, most of the variances that these guys have been approved for. Um, uh, let's, uh, let's just move forward, uh, um, um, a bit more please. Uh, there are some examples of the houses that are, uh, heavily, uh, lifted from the street. Like, and this one, that the circle is just the street on the south. Uh, you can see how many, how many steps, uh, just going to the house. Uh, it's not, we are not nearly lifting the house down, lifting the entrance, the house, there is no height variance. There are three houses side by side, you can see the street escape on circle, it's just one, one street to the south. Um, uh, these are some comparables. If you just turn to the page number twenty-five of my, my applicant, my, my support material, um, there is, uh, a precedent of a first floor height of two point forty-eight approved, uh, on one fifteen Wilmington, that, uh, one side of this house is on Brighton. Within two minutes of walking distance to the proposed house, page twenty-five, you can see that. Going backwards, uh, and this is going backwards, we gotta go to page twenty-five, uh, to show that precedent. Um, that house has like thirteen or fourteen steps going up to the main floor. Um, I think the staff don't show that page, but anyways, uh, um, I have not much to say. Yeah, I, I think this, this is, this is a true example of a minor variance. I hope that the panel moves to approve it. Thank you.
All right, I, I just wanna, uh, looking at the staff, uh, comment in the community planning report, uh, the concern kind of stems from the fact that, uh, there's, it doesn't seem, at least in their opinion, that there's no precedent within the immediate context. And while there's a lot of examples that you gave us, uh, I think they, they're a little bit more reflective of the broader, uh, area. Um, are, are there, are there examples, uh, within, I, I guess, that are closer to the subject property that you, you may consider part of that immediate context?
Yes, sir, if the staff would be so kind as the, 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 to, to, to show the page twenty-five of my support material, which I asked repeatedly, that would show number one fifteen Wilmington, it's the corner house. One side of it is on Brighton Avenue. Uh, and, uh, uh, that side has, uh, thirteen steps, uh, going up. It's, it's approved for two point forty-eight meters, uh, above the street level. Um, that side, uh.
Which number is that on Brighton?
Uh, one fifteen Wilmington. Wilmington is the street going, um, north-south. Uh, it's intersecting Brighton Avenue. At its intersection, there is, uh, uh, number one fifteen. The entrance is on, uh, I mean, if, if it wasn't because of this, uh, late, uh, objection from planning, I would have actually included the, the photo of that, would be very, very clear. Um, yeah, if you move forward, uh, yeah, page twenty-five, uh, of my, uh, yeah, you should go forward, move forward, uh, uh, the PDF has a page number, you can go to page number twenty-five, and that shows number one fifteen. And, uh, you can also, I encourage you to look at the street image of, of that house. But yes, thank you very much for finally bringing it to the screen. Just, uh, go to the, uh, yeah, that, the one highlighted, first floor height of two point forty-eight. That is an entire floor above the street. As if, you know, if I, um, apples to apples, I could actually eliminate, uh, my, uh, sunken entrance and, uh, enter the house from the main floor without any, any sunken entrance. Um, the, uh, a- a- as I explained, uh, I mean, why do I need that, that variance is just to provide adequate, uh, height beneath that for the laundry we have on the basement level. Uh, I don't think if it's contributing to the, to the, uh, uh, to the building mass, uh, the height of the building is well within the bylaw. The wall height that you can see these days, uh, very rarely, you know, any house comes in this area over, um, north of four oh one, even, even south of four oh one, without a wall height variance. You've seen many of them today. Um, but I don't have that. Uh, there is no variance that is, uh, on my proposal that is, uh, that is, uh, triggering a mass, uh, impact on the building, let alone that the coverage is well, uh, below the allowable thirty percent. It's only twenty-six percent. Um, this is, uh, going to be the home to somebody. And, uh, you know, we try to not to, um, not to, um, exceed a certain score footage because of the cost that it makes. Uh, and, uh, we didn't dig the basement too far. Uh, it would impose, uh, a massive cost to my client. Um, and, uh, because of that, uh, two variances generated. The three-story, which I see on the staff report, is considered a technical. And, uh, also the, uh, area of the rear balcony, uh, which they didn't mention, that that is also a technical variance. It's, it's created as a result of a three-story. Um, and also the, uh, the entrance, uh, that we are lifting up by twenty-seven centimeter, forty-seven centimeters. That give us the, the headroom, the minimal headroom. I think, you know, I mean, the, the, rarely I, I see this kind of applications these days. Uh, I, I, I hope that, uh, you know, uh, panel moves to approve it. I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Shakiri. Uh, is the basement, uh, the basement, uh, of the existing house is, is the, uh, elevation or the, the slab height, uh, changing with the new, uh, home?
The elevation of the existing house?
The elevation of the, uh, existing basement slab versus what's proposed is, are you, are you, are you, are you pouring a new slab for the basement?
Yes, sir, we're pouring a new slab, yes.
Okay, and I, I, just to your comment, I mean, we hear this argument come up time and time again about, you know, well, we could just lower the basement floor and then we could get rid of the variance, therefore it's technical. But it, to, you know, and it, just to play the other side and, and, you know, what staff is kind of getting at, couldn't you also just lower the, the first floor elevation or the dorsal height? And, 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 you know, get rid of that, uh, variance just by coming, having the first floor closer to established grade than the basement slab? Because it's not necessary that the basement slab's too high. I think where staff's concern is that it's because the first floor is being raised too high. So yes, you, you could lower the basement slab, uh, and, 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 you know, by nature of having the first floor, which is raised, uh, being closer to established grade, you, you could eliminate that variance. But you could also drop that first floor elevation to eliminate that as well, without touching the basement slab. Is that not fair to say?
It, it is absolutely fair, sir. And then I said, uh, it's a technical, the three-story variance and the area of the, um, rear, uh, deck is, are, are technical. But the first floor height, which is the elevation of the main entrance, main pedestrian entrance, is not technical. We needed that in order to provide adequate headroom beneath it. We thought it's not adding, uh, to the, uh, building mass, uh, by, by going marginally higher. Uh, and, uh, we have, uh, precedents that we have submitted. Uh, that is, uh, comparing to, uh, many other applications is, is minor, we believe. Uh, I mean, we, we leave it to you to decide, but, uh, I think, um, this, um, set of variances before you are, are very minor comparing to the, any other cases, including mine, you know? But that variance per se is not technical, I, I, I agree. Um, uh, it's, it's, I, but, but I find it very minor.
All right, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, any questions? No questions? All right, sir, it looks like we're ready to take this into committee. Thank you for your submission. Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Mr. Chairman, I am inclined to, um, support the application, but in, in compliance with the planning department report, the, um, they've recommended refusal of variances number one and three, and I agree with them. And I agree with the ration, rationale for those recommendations. And they've also suggested that there be permanent opaque screening or fencing along the east and west sides of the proposed rear second-story deck. I think with, um, with those changes and the, uh, forestry number one condition, and this is quite a reasonable, um, proposal, and I think it clearly meets the official planning bylaw and fits in well with the community.
Mr. Chair, if, if, uh, if you're refusing variance three, that, that condition isn't applicable.
You don't need that, you don't need the screening.
No.
So the way the, the staff report is written is, is if you approve variance three, then you would add that.
I'm trying to do two at once, yes. Okay, fair enough.
Okay, so your motion stands as, um,
Number three.
Refuse variance one and three. Um, the applicant amended variance four to delete it.
Yes.
Sorry, delete, so as amended, refuse variance one and three, and there's forestry, is that correct?
Forestry number one, that's correct.
All right, do I have a seconder? Uh, by Mr. Kivu, uh, all in favor? All right, uh, all right, I'll, I'll support that, yeah, that's unanimous, okay. All right, moving along, item number twenty, thirty Glen Eagle Crescent. The purpose of the application is a proposal to convert the existing carport to a garage and an unheated entrance. Variances, uh, for front yard and east side yard setback for a garage addition on file. Material from the applicant, do we have our applicant or agent with us?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm Tashin Lu, yeah.
Good evening. Sir, I've reviewed, uh, the file. I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they, uh, require a full presentation from you. I'm seeing heads shake. Um, if it's all right with you, it looks like we're ready to move into committee for a decision for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
But before we do, actually, I, I, maybe I'm getting a little too far ahead. Can we get your name and address for the record, sir?
Yeah, uh, my name is, yeah, uh, my name is Tashin Lu, and my address is ninety-nine zero six, reach me out, thank you.
Okay, uh, sir, it is your opportunity, uh, should you wish to, uh, address the committee with anything. But, uh, it looks like we're ready to move, uh, for a quick decision for you.
Yeah, I, I have no, uh, I have no further information, yeah. We just received their, uh, forest condition email, uh, the day before yesterday. I have no concern about their, uh, comments, yeah.
Okay, you, so you are aware, uh, forestry is asking, uh, they do have a condition, a standard, uh, forestry condition, uh, to submit a complete application for permit?
Yeah, yeah, I will, I, I will answer the comments from the forest, yeah.
All right, very good. And, uh, I thank you for, uh, the thorough, uh, presentation material and, uh, property pictures, very helpful. Okay, let's move into committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a submission to approve this application. Uh, the, the, um, variations are minus and in general, and confirmed to the, to the law. And then I will make the submi- I will make the submission for us to approve the application subject to the forestry condition, number, uh, one or two, yeah, sub- subject to the flo- forestry conditions.
All right, do I have a seconder? Yes, Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That is unanimous, that is approved. Item number twenty-one, fifty-two ninety-four to fifty-three oh four and fifty-three oh six Young Street. The purpose of this application is to increase the total GFA. The purpose of this application is to increase the total GFA permitted building height and number of stories and to reduce residential parking space rate. Uh, right, we have, uh, four variances, uh, related to the purpose of the application, reduction of residential parking spaces, increase to GFA and two height variances. On file material from the applicant, staff report from community planning, a memo from development engineering, email from Metrolinks, memo from transportation, and a letter from the TTC. All right, we have our agent in person with us, welcome, sir, good evening and thank you for your patience.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Jason Park, I'm counsel for the applicant, uh, landowner fifty-three hundred Young G P L T D, address one eighty-eight Avenue Row, Toronto, uh, postcode M five R two J one, I do have, uh, our architect, uh, Andrew Shields from Scott Shields Architects here with me.
Very good. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the gallery, I'm gonna ask staff, there's no other, no people online. Okay, you guys are the only here to speak to, people here to speak to this application. Uh, just give me a moment here. Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they require a full presentation from you, I've reviewed the file, I don't have any, uh, questions, it seems like you've, based on staff comments that you guys have resolved, uh,
We had consultation with planning staff on, on multiple occasions, I read all the memos. Um, we're in agreement with the planning staff, uh, conditions, the TTC conditions, development engineering conditions. I don't think transportation had any conditions on, on that, but we're agreeable to the conditions that have been provided.
You, you are, uh, prepared? Um, all right, uh, committee, uh, any questions? We may just move into committee for you, if that's all right?
That's all right with me.
Okay, all right, let's go into committee. Glad to see that they've worked, uh, through everything with staff before, it's rare, uh,
Agreed, everything seems to be in good order here, Mr. Chair. You know, barring any intense debate on this, which I don't think there's going to be, I'm prepared to put forward a motion.
Yes, yeah, please do.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you to the applicant for preparing the thorough package, I'm gonna put forward a motion to approve this application, uh, subject to the following conditions. Just bear with me one more second, cause there's several reports to run through here.
No problem, I can help you out if you need to.
Sure, if you have them here.
Yeah, we got three conditions from community planning, development engineering and TTC.
Oh, no problem, I was gonna read them, but let's do it that way.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
All right.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, the applicant is aware of all three conditions?
I am.
From community planning, from their memo, from development engineering and from TTC.
Yes, we've read them all.
Thank you.
Very good, we'll make it subject to, uh, those conditions, and, uh, that's my motion then.
All right, do I have a seconder? Second by Mr. Kibiu, all in favor, that is unanimous, you are approved, sir.
Great, thank you very much, it was worth the wait.
Yeah. All right, moving along here. They did, they had all their ducks in a row before coming. All right, uh, we are now on item twenty-two, thirty-three Burn Crest Drive. Purpose of the application is to construct a side and rear addition to the existing one-story dwelling. Four variances, front yard setback, building length, lot coverage and rear stair width. On file material from the applicant, two memos from urban forestry, one letter of objection from twenty-nine McGilvery Avenue. Have our agent, uh, with us, Mr. Park? No, we're, we just, yes, we have our agent, uh,
He says I get body.
There we go. Uh, and your address?
My address is Indianapolis, Tampa Hill.
All right. Okay, uh, I am going to ask for a brief presentation.
Sure.
I believe there's also, just, uh, I, I'm just noting there's some comments from urban forestry, perhaps you may be able to address, uh, in reference to the stair, uh, variance?
Yes, I'm sure that's why we want a modification to that variance, just to keep and preserve that tree based on urban forestry recommendation to variance number four. Stairs length to be reduced to seven point nine meters.
All right, seven point nine meter stair width. Um, I should ask, do you have an updated site plan?
Uh, I do in the presentation, in the presentation material.
All right, we'll take a look at that, uh, okay, the floor is yours.
Sure, uh, the application is to construct a one-story addition to the rear of an existing one-story dwelling. We're asking for four variances, I'm gonna go through them one by one. Variance number one for the front yard setback is basically the existing front yard setback of the house, but the reason that it's a variance now is, uh, some part of the garage wall is being replaced with a new wall. And the setback is taken from that new wall, but if you go, uh, the next page, you can see that the main wall of the house stays as is. And, uh, no, no, the one before. Yes, so main wall of the house stays, main front wall stays as is, uh, and the only reason for this variance is just a little portion of the garage wall is being demolished and it's considered a new wall. Uh, then we have variance for the bank and the coverage of the building, and the reason for that is, uh, this house belongs to an elderly couple, one of them with some disability issues. I do have the disability license here with me, but for privacy reasons, they asked me not to pull it up, but I do have it here with me. Uh, they also take care of their grandkids during the day, and they needed a bigger space, uh, and a more open one. Uh, so it was safer, uh, for both the kids and them, uh, and instead of going for a typical two-story house, which is gonna be challenging with their, with, um, the husband's disability issue, they decided to, uh, go all in one story. And to minimize the effect on the neighbors, we, um, tried to keep the length and the overall footprint of the building very similar to what was there before. If you go to the next slide, no, sorry, the previous one. Previous. Yes, you can see the length difference between the, uh, existing house and the, uh, new footprint is, uh, about like four and a half feet only. There's no side setback variance, no rear yard, no rear landscaping variance, no height variance. Uh, staff has no concern about this, our immediate, both our immediate neighbors and the one at the back are in support, we have, uh, one letter of support from them, the other two we got very late, so we didn't get to upload, you can see one of them at the last slide. So all our immediate neighbors are okay with this, uh, proposal, uh, knowing the situation of this family. Um, so considering the specific situation of the owners, uh, and the fact that the footprint of the, footprint and the massing of the house remains almost similar to what was there before, and way less than all other typical two-story developments in the neighborhood, I believe the application is minor in nature and meets the four tests, and I ask for the approval of this application. Uh, subject to the changes that are made to the rear steps to preserve the tree.
All right, uh, can we, just gonna ask, that is the updated site plan on the screen?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay, uh, any questions? All right, no questions at this time, we do have another speaker. No. Ah. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, uh, so seeing as we have no more speakers, I guess no more questions, uh, we can take this into committee for a, uh, decision. Thoughts, comments, yes, Mr. Niffel?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, if, with the revised variance number four to seven point four meters, um, that is clearly outside the zone of protection around the tree, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, seven point nine meters, yeah. Did you say seven point four?
I said seven point four, that's what I,
Seven point nine.
Okay, all right, seven point nine, staff? Cut off. Thanks. Okay, uh, yeah. Is that helpful? And, uh, actually, it's good to see, uh, I, I agree with, uh, forestry's, uh, recommendation, I think that's an easy modification, uh, to make in order to, uh, respond to the, uh, mature tree. Any other? Comment?
Like, I, I, I'll maybe just jump in, I, I think given it's a single-story addition, uh, that's, it's sort of a, of great consideration. I think had this been proposed as a two or a three-story dwelling, I might have some reservation, uh, with respect to the lot coverage. Um, it's a, it's a little bit high, um, but I also acknowledge the fact that, you know, we need a variety of housing types, uh, that can accommodate, uh, different people's needs, um, and, uh, the exclusion of a second or third story, uh, in this case, uh, I, I can understand the need, uh, for, you know, the building length and the, uh, lot coverage.
Yeah, I, I echo your thoughts there, Mr. Chair. And while the, uh, lot coverage is a bit higher than what I typically like to see, it's not triggering any other, um, variances related to landscape cover or anything like that, so,
Yeah.
I can live with this one.
Yeah, it's, it's tough because you don't have a lot of space left in the backyard, and the stairs do take up quite a bit of space. Uh, but to your, your observation there, we're not triggering any landscaping variances in the backyard, um,
I can make a motion if,
For rear yard setback.
Unless, Mr. Nimfeld, if you need some time.
No, I'm good, thanks.
You're good, all right.
Um, okay, therefore I'll put forward a motion to approve this application, uh, subject to variance number four, uh, being reduced to seven point nine meters in stair width. And subject to urban forestry condition number two.
All right, do I have a seconder? Yes, Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That's unanimous, your application is approved. All right, item number twenty-three. Get to twenty-three, where are we now? Item twenty-three. I'm having deja vu, is Mr. Shakiri's back. Uh, eighty-four Elmwood Avenue, purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. Uh, six variances, including lot coverage, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, pedestrian entrance height, number of stories and rear platform area. On file, a material from the applicant. We have our agent with us, Mr. Shakiri.
Yes, sir, Arin Shakiri, three twenty-six Chapel Avenue East, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Just give us one moment. Colleagues, I'm gonna ask whether or not you require full presentation or questions? All right. And staff, you don't have any speakers on this, all right. Uh, Mr. Shakiri, I don't think we require presentation, uh, it looks like we're ready to move to committee for a quick decision for you. Uh, but if there's anything you'd like to add, please, uh, please do so.
Nothing to add on my side, sir.
Okay, I, I think this one's pretty straightforward. Okay, let's, uh, go into committee.
If there's no comments, I can put forward a motion there, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, i- in reviewing it, I think it's relatively straightforward, what's being asked for is minor, uh, the only numerically large ones are in, I trigger as a result of, um, the grades in the basement level versus first level and how that's categorized, so, I'm comfortable enough with that, I'm gonna put forward a motion to, uh, approve this application without condition.
All right, good, good planning rationale, too, I might add, uh, by the applicant. All right, second by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous, that is approved. Item number twenty-four, seventeen Spindlewood Drive. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by demolishing the existing second floor and first floor, uh, to build a new two-story dwelling on the existing foundation walls with extension to the rear. Asking for three variances, rear deck height and projection, lot coverage and side main wall heights. On file material from the applicant and an email from Metrolinks. Have our agent, uh, with us?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we unmuted Gary.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have unmuted the agent, we're just waiting for the agent to start speaking.
All right. Hello?
Mr. Chair, if we can't get the agent to speak right now, can I ask the agent to log off, log back in, perhaps we'll move on to the last item and circle back?
Mr. Chair, why don't we go to the, the last item?
Yes, okay, all right, let's stand down, item number twenty-four, um, just because we cannot get a hold of the agent, but hopefully, uh, we can fix that problem. Uh, while we are working on that, uh, we're gonna move over to item number twenty-five. Forty-five Tavistock Road, the purpose of the application is to construct a two-story addition over the existing house footprint. Uh, asking for two variances, front yard setback and east side yard setback, on file material from the applicant and a memo from urban forestry. Have our agent with us?
Greetings, Chair and committee members, football are keeping well. Uh, my name is Lou Parente, Napa Design, located at forty-seven Lowes Water Avenue in Markham. I'm here representing the, uh, property at forty-five Tavistock Road.
All right, sir, I understand, uh, the, uh, through the purpose of the application, um, this is a, a new building that is, uh, being constructed on existing foundations, um, is, I, I presume that is, uh, also, uh, because of the existing condition of the existing foundations, that is triggering those, uh, variances, is that fair to say?
Um, correct, yeah, we're building, uh, basically we're taking the roof off and adding a second floor. Um, for structural reasons, we really, especially the side yard setback, um, you know, it, it, from a visual, um, and curb appeal to, to set, you know, that, that wall back, uh, becomes a bit of a construction challenge. Um, and then a visual, um, um, you know, uh, uh, non-appelling, in my opinion. Um, and the neighbor basically has the mirror image of, of the, uh, house, uh, as well. So, the impact would be, uh, minimal on that, uh, side yard, as he also has a garage on that side of the house. So, in future, if he ever wanted to build, um, he could build on top of his garage as well.
Alright, very well. Uh, I don't have any more questions. I'll ask my colleagues whether they do. Nope, I'm hing sing, head shake. Uh, if there's anything else you'd like to add, uh, you may. Otherwise, I can take this into committee for you.
No, I, I think it's fine. I think it's very minor in nature and reasonable, uh, in what we're asking.
Seems pretty straightforward. Alright.
Yeah.
We'll, uh, move this into committee. Yes, Mr. Niffeld?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a very, I, my view, a very easy one. The variances are extremely minor. Um, he's building on an existing house, so he has constraints. Um, the objective of building on an existing house, I commend, and I think that's a great idea. Subject to forestry condition number three, I'd like to move approval. I think this is an asset to the community.
Yeah. Alright, second by Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? That is unanimous, sir. You have your approval. Great, thank. Alright, staff. Yeah, how are we doing? We're back? Okay, so, moving back to item number twenty-four. Seventeen Spindelwood Drive. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by demolishing the existing second and first floor and to build a new two-story dwelling on the existing foundation walls with extension to the rear. Uh, as noted, three variances, rear deck height and projection, lot coverage, and side main wall heights. On file, material from the applicant and an email from Metrolinks. We have our agent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was speaking to this one.
Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Please. Sorry, what did you say?
Uh, your name and address?
Oh, yes, it's, uh, Jerry Palischkevich, uh, fifty-eight Alamo Avenue.
Alright. Alright, sir. Um, we do also have, uh, some neighbors online that would like to speak to this. Uh, staff still online? Yes, okay. So, I'm gonna ask for a, a brief presentation from you.
Okay, so, we, we have, we are, we are proposing, uh, to rebuild the building basically on, uh, existing foundation walls. Uh, we have a small extension to the rear, and, uh, there are three variances. Uh, one is, uh, uh, I start from the, from the third one is a really small one for the height. From, uh, we are increasing the height from seven point five meters to seven point seventy-three. Uh, the second, uh, variance is for, to increase the maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to thirty-one point zero five. So, the, these variances are really small, around three percent to five percent increase. And the first one, uh, from number sounds a little higher. It's, uh, for rear deck, uh, it's, uh, a bit, uh, uh, higher than allowed from, from the ground. Uh, it, uh, just, uh, it comes from, uh, from the ground slope to the rear. And, uh, most of the neighbors have the same situation because the ground slopes are quite subs- substantially to the back.
Okay, alright, very good. Questions? Yes, Mr. Niffeld?
Um, given the height of the deck, have you given any thought to provide, um, screening on, I'm just looking, on the east side, um, to, um, secure the privacy of the people at number fifteen? Because the balcony is basically a floor up in the air.
Uh, can we, can we propose the privacy screen there?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Had you considered that?
Yes, 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 we agree.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't presume you have any examples of similar, uh, balcony structures in the immediate area? Sir?
Sir? Uh, yes, yes, there are, there are almost every house has the same situation on this side of the streets.
Alright, any further questions? No. Okay, alright, uh, let's hear from, uh, our neighbors.
So, it looks, sorry, Mr. Chair, it looks like it's from the same household, so we just be mindful of the five minutes for the household.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Uh, just so our neighbors understand, I, eh, eh, the, uh, the allotted speaking time is, uh, five minutes. Uh, so, just that, you know, be mindful of that and, and, uh, you can decide how you want to split that up. Do we have, uh, Catherine or Erin with us? We've got Catherine.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We unmuted, uh, Catherine Hall. Please, uh, Catherine, accept the request to unmute yourself.
I put unmute me.
Oh, there we go.
Are we started?
Yes, your name and address.
Yes. Good evening, everybody and Mr. Chair. I'm Catherine Hall. I'm the co-owner, uh, of your neighboring house in discussion. I am at nineteen Spindelwood Drive, adjacent to nineteen, uh, seventeen Spindelwood Drive. But right now, I am, uh, under rehab, so I am not at nineteen Spindelwood Drive temporarily, okay? But I am the owner, so I'm gonna speak. Um, I have submitted in writing to the Committee of Adjustment on February twenty-seventh. Okay, and, um, we have some issue that I like to address publicly in writing. Um, during and after construction, I asked my neighbor not to damage our fence adjacent to your property. Please build your fence next to ours and do not invade into our property space. I know that you said, oh, this is not.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna cut you off there. Ma'am, ma'am, I'm just gonna cut you off for a second. So, we, we're only here to discuss, uh, the variances that are before us. If there are, um, civil disputes, uh, between neighbors regarding property line fences, this is not the forum for that. But I, I, I would.
Um, I sort of, uh, we got burned by our neighbor, uh, and, uh, our, uh, other neighbor. So, we want to make sure that this will not happen again.
Understood.
So, um, I'm sorry.
However, there, there is a forum for this. This is not that forum. Uh, i- if you would, I, you know, given you are the immediate neighbor, if you'd like to speci- uh, spec- uh, sorry, speak specifically to the variances, um, we would like to hear from you, but, uh, I just want to caution you. Uh, we have no interest in, in hearing, uh, civil matters between, uh, neighbors, including property line fence disputes. There's, there's a different.
But our, our neighbor came to talk to us.
Alright.
And said that he want to build his fence, and then, uh, he want us to pay for it. So, what we, what if we cannot afford it? So, when, shouldn't the neighbor be responsible himself to pay for it? Because we never asked him to rebuild a monster house.
Mr. Chair, I think, again, we have to emphasize to the neighbor that this committee is not of jurisdiction to listen to or adjudicate to, um, property line fence disputes or construction matters. It's best that the neighbor focus the five minutes on the variances before the committee. Perhaps committee can help with those variances.
Yeah. Do, do you understand, uh, what, uh, the committee that year before, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, I understand, but just that it's, it goes hands in hand. And, uh, we want to put it in writing, so we did. And, um, so, ca- can I ask you a, a question? So, the neighbor said, I want to rebuild our fence in the common area, and the neighbor said, I cannot afford it. We're all retirees and nobody ever asked us in the last forty years.
You, I, I, you can ask the question, but I can't give you the response, ma'am, because I, I don't deal with fence disputes. I don't, and I, I can't comment on them. All I can comment on are the three variances that your neighbor is applying for, uh, that are before us, which have to do with a deck projection, lot coverage, and the height of their exterior main walls that they're proposing. Everything else, I, I have no jurisdiction over, uh, and I, I'm not willing to provide any, any comment on. But there, there are separate, um, avenues that you can take where these, uh, these concerns can be, uh, discussed. This, this is not one of those. So, I mean, unless.
So, uh, you want, you want us to spend the lawyer fee to do, uh, to, uh, go up? Do you think it's our neighbor's responsibility to do something about this? Because they are trying to build a monster house in beside ours, okay? And we have to cope with all this, uh, construction issue and things like that. And also, I just ask not to have them destroy our property, which have happened before, when our last next neighbor really tried to rebuild the house, okay? We are really, really, really unhappy. We just want the same thing not to happen again.
Fair enough.
There's no dispute because they, they just destroy our property without taking any responsibility. So, our other neighbor may do the same thing again.
Alright.
So, we want to say it out publicly that we are not going to cope with this and deal with this.
Ma'am, do you have any concern with the variances that are before us?
Um, they do not, yeah, we have to deal with it. It's not as good. But just that, you know, we can accommodate them, but just that they cannot destroy our property.
Okay, but that's not what's before us. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not your problem. You're gonna put us at the end of, I have registered a formal complaint already. We are, I waited for three to four hours.
I, I understand, but we're not, you, okay. Alright, so unless.
I'm pretty pissed off right now. I just got discharged from hospital. That's why I'm not in my home, okay? I'm in a rehab place, and I'm just gonna join it. But just that, um, I am pretty unhappy about the way you handle this, okay? It's very, very user-friendly, and I want to register a formal complaint for your committee.
Alright, you're more than welcome to do that, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I put it in writing already.
Alright, thanks.
I said that you email, cc everybody.
Okay.
But just that I'm asking, I am asking, it's not a dispute. It's just something that is reasonable. You know, you want to do the fence? You, you want to do the fence? You just pay for it yourself and do it within your own property. Don't expect us to pay for it.
Alright.
Because we didn't ask for it.
Okay, ma'am, you had, you've had your opportunity to grandstand. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna end this now? Alright, thanks.
Do I, have I reached my five minutes?
Yes.
Yet? If not, can I, can I just say, I want to protect our property from damages during your alteration and construction? I think this is good neighborhood sense, and please, please be responsible for you, for what you are doing.
Fair enough. I don't, I.
And don't ask for the unreasonable.
Fair enough. I don't disagree with you, but when and if they apply for building permit, you can reach out to Toronto Building and raise your concerns with the building inspector. Uh, or alternatively, you can call three-one-one. But this is a committee that deals with, uh, variances, uh, that have to do with the, uh, bylaw. So, I, I just want to be mindful of, of, uh, ensuring that we're staying on track here. Okay, uh, so we've heard from the neighbor.
Right? You put us to the last one. I already registered my complaint.
Alright.
Okay? So, just deal with my complaint.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright.
So, Mr. Chair, it looks like the second person is from the same household. Did you want to confirm that? I'll leave that up to you.
Sure, let's confirm the address, but, uh, we've, we've used up the five minutes from that address. So, unless they're from a different address, uh, we've, they've, they've run the clock.
Do you want to just unmute the speaker? Just confirm he is from the same address?
Sir, sir, uh, your name and address, please? No connection? No? Okay. Alright, we tried. Okay, let's go back to, oh, we do have him online? Alright. Alright, so we've got the agent back with us. Uh, sir, normally, uh, this would be your opportunity to address comments that were made by the neighbor. Um, unfortunately, they, they haven't provided us any, uh, eh, you know, they see, th- their concern has to do, seems to have to do with, uh, more of a civil dispute. So, um, I just, just be mindful. Uh, you're only obligated to address, uh, the variances that are, uh, before us.
Talked to the, to the neighbor, and, uh, I thought everything is agreed to, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir? Yes, uh, the, uh, the owner of the house, uh, he actually lives on the same street, uh, right now. And, uh, and I talked to him today, and he said that he spoke to, to this neighbor. And, and she was fine with the explanation, so I'm not sure what's, what's happened.
Okay. Uh, the matter seems to be around a property line fence and concern over damage, uh, in construction. So, you don't have to address that. Actually, I'd, I'd ask that you not, uh, address that. Uh, but if there's anything you'd like to rebut in relation to the variances, uh, it is your time to do so.
No, no, I, I think I am fine. It's, it's, they're quite minor variances.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, let's take this matter into committee. Yay. Mr. Niffeld?
Mr. Chairman, this is a very straightforward and I would argue relatively minor application that I don't think offends, um, the neighborhood context or the neighborhood planning principles. I'd like to move approval of the, um, variances as proposed with, um, um, one condition, that there be a one-point-five-meter screen erected along the east side of the rear deck. And the Metrolinks, I, I seek advice from the Secretary of Treasury. Is that a condition, the Metrolinks? It, it looks as though it's a condition.
They're asking for.
Yes, so the Metrolinks condition as well.
But I'll leave that up to you, if you want to put it on?
Yes, I do.
You're very generous to Metrolinks.
Sorry, can I verify the privacy screen? It's on the east side?
I have it on the east side.
Of the rear deck?
Yes.
East side rear deck, standard one-point-five. Thank you.
Yeah. I will, just to, just note, Mr. Niffeld, like, there is a considerable amount of, uh, screening via the tree, uh, three mature trees, uh, on that side, but, uh, otherwise, I, I don't have an objection to the screen. I am a little concerned, some of the impositions, uh, that Metrolinks, uh, is asking for, but, um, I, I'll just leave that, I'll leave that there.
Yeah, well, if, pardon me for a sec. If, if we don't need to add it, I'm fine if we don't add it. Um, I just personally have some difficulty reading the Metrolinks memo sometimes to determine if, in fact, their conditions are just advice. This one sounded like a condition to me.
If it's advisory, they will tell you in the memo it's advisory.
Yeah, they are asking for, uh, conditions, but I, that is at our.
This one, this one looks like it's a condition. So, we'll leave it up to you, if you want to make it as part of your motion.
I would be inclined to add it.
Okay, so, we've got the Metrolinks, uh, condition as well as the privacy screening, uh, with approval. On the east, uh, yes, east side rear deck, yeah. I did confirm that was the right. I did confirm that was the right, uh, side. Alright, do I have a s- I don't, I don't see any forestry.
I don't have forestry, no.
You sure? Forestry number three? Just confirm.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, yes, it's, it's very late in the day. Okay. No for, okay, no forestry, uh, condition, or do we have a seconder? Mister Bartolo? Alright, all in favor? Alright, unanimous. Uh, your application, sir, is approved. That concludes our hearing. Uh, can we get a motion? Uh, the time is now eight eleven P M. Can I get a motion, uh, to adjourn?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I put forward a motion to adjourn.
Alright, second, Mister, uh, Nitfeld, all in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, uh, and, uh, everybody, let's get home.